Hi, welcome to the Planning Board of June -- meeting of June 10. And I think our first, I'm sorry, I just dashed in a tiny bit late. Our first public hearing starts at 7:35, I think so. I have two minutes to collect myself. So, oh, so our first public hearing, we do have to take the vote, is a continued public hearing for 76 Main Street. They have requested to be continued to when?
Twenty second.
Okay. And do we have a time, or do we, did we research, do we need to have a time?
Um, I think yeah.
So 7:30. So I'll entertain a motion to continue the public hearing for 76 Main Street to July 22nd at 7:30.
Still moved.
Second?
Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay. Two minutes. We're just whistling a happy tune until 7:35. Yeah, you might as well set up, yep. So, just for board members, we are all eligible to vote on this, including our newly elected members, because there's been no testimony taken, even though it was opened a long time ago. So this is really the, this is, this is the first meeting where we're hearing testimony.
Through the chair. I have the notes that came this afternoon in my email. Is there a printed out version?
Of what?
Of the minutes from last week, uh, last meeting.
I have a printed copy.
I gave her a printed out version.
We're probably not gonna review those today and.
No, definitely not, because they weren't posted. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. There will be time.
Excellent, thank you.
Can I add something not related to a hearing?
Yes.
So I requested the enrollment projections from the superintendent, the most recent ones from December.
Perfect.
And I'll share them with the group.
Awesome. By email, you're just gonna send them around, or?
Yeah. I'll copy John, so that the town has.
Yes. Yeah, yeah.
Amy, those new numbers, what timeframe do they cover in total?
I believe it's a 10-year out, so 10 years past, 10 years future.
Okay. Awesome.
Thank you for doing that.
They're already a little behind, but.
They're already behind.
Sorry, I know.
This year's?
Well, they were done in December, so.
Okay, so.
But there are more students have enrolled since December.
An attractive spot. So I will entertain a motion to open the public hearing, the public hearing for Aspenok Woods on West Elm Street.
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay. So we're just waiting patiently until you're ready.
And one more thing is, uh, this is chairwoman. I might need to leave around nine today.
Okay.
It might be for a little while, it might be for the whole time, so.
Okay.
Playing by ear.
Playing by ear. Do what you need to do. Thanks for letting us know. planner for his thoughts. He's already shared with us a lot of thoughts in his memo, but anything from there. And then, I do have an outline, I apologize it wasn't in the packet, but I have a, an example to follow, so I'll detail out the outline. Our process often is to then hear from Beta, and then if there are any other town department comments, and then to discuss if there are anything, anything we need to add to the typical agenda. That's, and then we go from there.
So welcome.
For the record, Peter Barberi, on behalf of Aspenok in, in. So what we have here tonight is, changes to three buildings. So looking at the site plan, John, you got, oh, yeah, okay. So we're talking about.
It won't light up on the screen.
It doesn't work. It's not lighting up. So when you come in off of the main road, the buildings that you see in dark are the two areas of the buildings that were changed, for the north of the screen is units 23 and 24, and just pull all those, 21 and 22. So they're kind of within a little isolated island. There's no units immediately abutting any of those. Around the backside as well as the, it's called the sun side, they continue to be set back, their basic requirements set back some streets. So we have changed the, the footprints of the buildings in interiors, and we can go through the individual plans and the changes, but overall, they fit within the building envelope that was originally approved. So looking at 21 and 22, which again are the southerly docked buildings on that, we had an increase of 47 square feet on, on the main level. We modified some of the living areas, and we added an increase in the garage from 20 to 24 feet. We moved the mudroom, the size of the study was re- enlarged. As to unit 22, the area of that floor floor was actually reduced by 107 square feet. And then the upper levels were also modified and increased by 15, 80 square feet separately. So this is, what you see on that photograph right there, that is the depiction of what the unit will be. It's consistent with the CECLs that were previously approved, and the nature of the architectural materials, and all those things, we're not changing any of that. And then again, the description of the changes are on the packet you have, and again, that's the bit of blow up of those. They continue to all be the same number of bedrooms, same construction, same element. We met with the design review board in April on the changes to the CECLs, as well as the changes to 23 and 24, and I'll describe those. They didn't have any issues with those at that point in time. The second thing we're changing, a little more complicated, is the single unit off of Elm Street. Before we get to that, the other change, again, is the units 23 and 24. That's the. You're down, and again, you have the, the detailed changes to the floor area. Basically, the unit 24 was expanded more to the right, we switched off the site plan, and increased, the whole footprint was increased by about 600 square feet. However, the upper level was reduced. Again, same number of bedrooms, same whole architecture of the whole thing, but there was more room, as you saw from the site plan, to that north element, that we created a deck in more room off of that, and really opened up the middle of the unit for the family room, dining room, and kitchen. So we increased the square footage a bit on that one, and less on 23. And the upper levels were both decreased in size from what was previously approved. Again, we came, kept the same separation distance around the road, the same setback from the drive leading to these units, and those were the changes.
And the design review board, just for the record, has seen both of those, right? And have no issues with either of them?
So.
I can give you our comments if you want, which they've done. So if the garage is gonna be at the front, we wanted a little more detail, even though it's a garage, which they've done. And if the garage was gonna be at the side, we wanted at least a window, even though it wasn't the garage, because it just makes, breaks up the facade, so, and they were agreeable.
So those four units, you know, again, we met with the design, they really didn't ask us to change any of those. The other unit we're talking about changing, or in essence creating, is the single family that was on West Elm Street, that as part of the original decision, the board wanted us to remove, and we've now developed the plan for that. And in regards to that, that's the whole amendment of the special permit. Are the special permit requirements, that you're supposed to have a permit, a buffer of 100 feet around the development. With the original approval, the board reduced that to 7.5 from, again, that site plan that you saw, but because of wetlands and the way that was laid out in the septic system that is necessary for 5 West Elm, we can't meet that requirement. We're asking for waivers of that. We have designed that development so that complies with the dimensional requirements in the underlying district, which is a 50-foot front setback and a 25-foot side setback. But we can't meet the dimensional requirements or the special permit requirements. The original building didn't meet them either, so we're asking for that relief and that amendment of the special permit. In going through with the design review, again, that was a little bit different from us, because what it was, was a normal duplex, which we had originally shown to the design review boards. But what happens, that common wall that you don't have the duplex unit next to, they were asked us to dress that up a little bit more. So we went back to the design review board in May, and at the same time, the engineer looked at the concept from the viewpoint of the layout of the residence coming from West Elm. And we developed a separate alternative, which is a driveway, excuse me, a garage off the side rather than off the front. So the plans that you have in your, part of your package, we just updated on Friday, so you don't have the newest ones. I've got those not shown. Again, you've got West Elm Street. This would be the proposal with the driveway coming off the side rather than off the front. That's the base site plan. Again, 25-foot setback, 50-foot back in the road, false scenarios, we keep those requirements. So this, again, this would be the front view from Elm Street, the drive on the other side. When we met with the designer view, this wall, again, that would have been the common wall to have a unit next to it. They asked for a little more items there, so we actually took the entryway, which originally was on the other side, and moved it on this side to create the break of all those elements. So again, we're putting windows in the front, we'll have a typical landscaping around the building. So this is the side entry layout. And that would be, as you're coming down West Elm Street, before you get to the house, that would be the view you would see. And from the original entry, we had the sun in the back corner, and again, did some interior changes from the previously approved MOA unit. That's the depiction, kind of from the backside, along the back with a deck.
Mr. Barberi? Can, can you just give us, for those of us that weren't around for the early hearings on this, can you give us a little bit of history? Because my understanding is that the original plan was to keep the existing house. And, so, I just, it'd be helpful to hear a little bit more detail about what's changed from when the original special permit was approved.
The actual. I think it was the 2013 decision asked us to either upgrade or tear down that building, because it was not, it was an old building in need of much repair. So when we went through looking at trying to, just rehabbing it, the cost of rehab and the size of the building didn't fit with anything else that was taking place in the development. In fact, the, not having been involved in the original approval, the original site plan that was presented for the project actually had driveway coming off that lot. And apparently, through discussions with the board, the drive was switched on the back where it is now. That lot, however, was kept as part of the condominium, even though it really doesn't have any. Do you have the site plan again, the overall site plan? So again, you can see it down on the right-hand corner, that's the lot we're talking about. But originally, the road was gonna come in there and connect and loop around, and ultimately the plan approved coming off the north plant, the northern portion of the site. This lot could have been separated out, because as you can see, it really never has any relationship to the rest of the, to the condominium, in the nature of it, doesn't use the roadways, it doesn't have the drainage system, it's got its own separate system. For all intent and purposes, at that point in time, it probably should have been backed out. It can be backed out and still leave the entire development with the required open space for the, for the special permit requirements for this type of a development, but for some reason, it was not. And that's something we're looking at, and would have to come back and ask the board to amend it, and pulling it out, because there's legally no real reason for that lot to be part of this condominium development. Again, it doesn't share in any of the aspects of the open space, the roadway, no maintenance issues as well. But that property was looked, as I saw it in the decision, wanting to be upgrade, upgraded, and by the time you did that in the septic system, it really left no alternative but to basically remove it and replace it with a unit that is being built within the development.
Okay, so just so I understand, so, the original special permit was approved with the intention of keeping that unit, correct? And then at some point.
I was not involved in the original permitting, so.
Upgrading or getting, or removing it was what I heard.
I don't know that there was specifically keeping it. I mean, it's a tear down, it really.
So was the original plan to tear it down?
I think it was, and then, and to build a home in the same spot.
Through the, through the chair?
I don't think that it was necessarily to.
We're gonna hold our questions until we get to that.
But it was to build a home in that spot, and they just sort of left, they, they didn't really go any further.
Okay.
I was just, this is their lawyer's letter?
Yeah, go ahead.
Right here? Okay, so, it says, "From the Fletcher and Tilton, the 2005 approval included waivers. Sell at the existing house at 5 West Elm Street may remain in its present location." So it wasn't a tear down initially, just wanted to clarify that. It may have been later on, in 2013, but at the 2005, this is according to their lawyer.
Perfect, thank you.
Ms. Chair, I was on the board when 2013 discussion was happening, and I can counter some of the things that were said, and maybe give some context to some of the things that were said, but some of the wording that's been used, I think, is very misleading. We agreed that the building would either be restored or could be torn down, but not replaced because of the issues he was pointing out. And one of the reasons there was not a driveway through there is because of the wetlands, and issues with, what are you gonna do with that property in the future, and leaving that for a future decision. It's not like, it wasn't addressed, it wasn't thought about, it wasn't planned. This project's fully planned and approved for what it was, and it keeps coming back and changing, and changing, and changing. So, no, I was there, the house is either gonna be restored or torn down, and that's up to you.
So there's, this is new discussion to put a new unit up there?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, I think we understand. Did you have anything more in your presentation?
We can fully describe changes if you'd like, but, so, what we were hoping to do, again, this is the, the site plan with the driveway coming off the front. So that would be the depiction of the unit with the driveway off the front. It is a question from the viewpoint of the Conservation Commission, in which one they're gonna allow us to build, because as you can see from the site plan, we're within the, the buffer from wetlands to the left-hand side. So they may not allow us to do the side entry, which has a little bit more grading impact within that buffer. So we're hoping if we reach agreement on changes to this unit, that you would do it in the alternative, and whichever one the Conservation Commission approved, that would be the one that we would construct.
When do you see the ConCom?
We haven't.
We haven't applied yet.
You haven't applied yet.
Okay, I think that it would be, I, I'm not gonna speak for the whole board, but I think that I can say that it is, would be uncommon for us to approve two alternatives, depending on what the ConCom decides. So I don't know that that's a, an expectation you wanna count on. How about the principal planner?
So, there's two decisions here. You've got the special permit decision, which concerns 5 West Elm. You've got the design changes to units 21 through 24. The change in the units doesn't seem significant, the design review board signed off on those, it's mostly internal type of stuff, so that would just have to meet the site plan requirements. I think there's a decision that needs to be made by the planning board, whether it's major or minor. The applicant has requested that we advertise for major, just in case, so that there's a decision that can be made, so if you guys choose it to be major, that decision can be made today.
Okay.
If it's a minor, it wouldn't need to be advertised anyway, so that one's.
Okay.
The special permit, I see the applicant's argument that it's kind of separate from the development, and therefore, it does conform to the underlying zoning, however, it is part of the special permit, so it would be the board's purview to review those setbacks in context of the special permit. The board is able to grant those waivers, so it would be able to grant the relief needed, but it would be up to the board to determine whether that is appropriate.
So, specifically, it is part of the special permit, even though it is sort of set aside from the development? Yeah.
Because it was, as Frank went out, it was allowed to either be upgraded or turned down as.
Right. Did you have a question?
Again, I'm just interested in the history here, but I mean, given that it's a, it's, sounds like it's always planned to be its own separate dwelling, so why was it included in the special permit to begin with?
Again, originally, the roadway was coming off there, so.
Okay, okay, so that's why, okay, thank you.
And, and then, that was never changed when the road was shifted. It likely should have been leaving it in the underlying distance with the 50-foot setback, 25-foot site back, setback, which we meet, because again, the existing house doesn't meet your setbacks for the district because of the special permit.
Okay, and is, are there any engineering difficulties or challenges at all?
I don't know if they had any, I don't believe they did.
I mean, we've gotta get a new septic approval on ConCom for the unit on West Elm. The other two uni, the, excuse me, the other four units, the roadways, there's nothing changed site-wise, it's just the footprint of the unit.
Yeah, I had some note that there was an open issue from the Board of Health, that's the septic, right? The Board of Health?
We filed with them, the, the site plan application in, in all the plans, I haven't heard from them, although I did see a letter just saying that the, the septic testing had to be witnessed and all the normal requirements. And again, same numbers of bedroom as originally approved, so, you know, there's nothing there than the normal process we got to go through for the septic approval.
And when did you file with the Board of Health? What?
We haven't filed yet.
For 31?
Board of Health, yeah, no.
You haven't yet, or, I'm sorry?
No, there's, there's a septic field in the ground from the previous house.
Oh, okay, so the design, I guess, is to use the existing if they allow it, because the existing was more than a two-bedroom.
The design that we're looking at is, is the.
Proposed.
Okay, so you still have to utilize the Board of Health process, right? Because Title V situation?
Well, we've gotta get them to agree that we can use the existing system for the new house, which should be fine, because this is only a two-bedroom dwelling, and that's what.
Right.
First ConCom, then Board of Health.
Did you, did you, have you initiated with the Board of Health, was my question? Not yet?
We haven't, filed for a Title V.
Okay.
And just to clarify, I think, I believe what you're saying is ConCom then Board of Health.
Final, so I know the Board of Health and ConCom have to be filed, yep.
Can I have my question?
Yes, yeah.
And then, I, I wouldn't have guessed this, but it looks like it was built in 1940, so it's more than 75 years old, is that correct?
I don't know what year it was built.
Okay, so the property record card on the town website says 1940, which surprised me, it looks newer than that, but, but so then we'd also have to go through historical commission for demolition permit, right? Is that correct?
It's more than 75 years old.
Yeah, we'll, we'll check the year, I, I got all the year.
Okay. I, I doubt that it's historically significant, but it's, you still have to go through the process.
Yep.
Through the chair, what was some of the reasons the, I can imagine some of the reasons the initial entryway to the development was moved, but if you could just go through why the driveway didn't go through this lot at that time? Like, if it was initially planned to go through this lot, why, why was it moved to the backside?
Neither of us were part of that permitting.
So I, I don't think.
So we acquired the development post.
Post-approval.
That approval process, several years.
Okay.
Five or six years after that.
The next, the next item on the agenda is other town departments and comments, and I think that the Board of Health and ConCom are the, the two open ones that I know. We always ask about the fire department access. I presume that's all set, or have you talked to the fire department?
We have not. We have not, I wouldn't think there would be a problem. Again, the, the unit on West Elm will be a normal house on a normal road, and, and the other changes aren't impacting any of the roadway patterns to the units.
Yeah, we do have a relatively new bylaw that does drive that process a little bit. It is very worth asking, and particularly on some of our more challenging roads and.
Torturous.
There it is. I was gonna say scenic, but I don't know that it's a scenic route, that has its own connotation. But it's, it's very definitely worth asking the fire department and avoiding any challenges there.
We'll, we'll do that.
Can you think of any other town departments that necessarily? I think that one, okay.
Yes, I do have a question about other town departments.
Yes.
At some point, there was talk about making like a landing or a dock at the end of the property on the west side of the lake, the side of the lake that's there. Is that still a possibility?
We constructed a boathouse.
Okay.
That's, that's been constructed, and it's housing boats, and people are usually utilizing them.
So, so Parks and Rec has nothing to do with, with that kind of situation? It's near the lake, as, and they're restricted to that side of the lake because of the bridge, land bridge, but, okay, it's nice to know that, that's completed.
So at this point, planning board members and the public are invited to add to the outline. outline if there are issues that we want to make sure we cover that aren't on the typical outline. And I apologize, I'm working off a draft nobody has in front of them. But let me just read it really quickly. Planning board members add to the outline, schedule a sitewalk if needed, detailed discussion on things like the Conservation Commission filing, zoning compliance, road and lot layout design, concept plan, traffic, stormwater management, utilities, the septic system, open space. Some of this is not going to be necessary in detail, because it's a small piece of this special permit. Historical features, I don't think that we're going to have any open beta issues, it would be final beta issues. And I would say on this one, we would be deciding early whether it was a major or minor change on the two sets of two units. Anybody have anything else they want to add? Anybody from the public have anything to add to the outline? We need to have you come forward, introduce yourself so the folks at home and we know who you are, and then your address.
My name is Lori Hurley, I live at Two Lake Point Way. I am a four-year resident of Hockington, and I've been living in Mass Penock Woods since August of 2016. I don't have fancy boards, but I did put together...
Did you want, you can pass these things out. What we're specifically asking for at the moment is whether you have things you want to add to the outline, but we will certainly take all your testimony.
Okay. Sorry, did that answer?
Potentially, yes.
So I'd like to add landscaping, that they take care of consideration, because my unit, although there's some units that, but the staff of that unit will look right into my bedroom.
So the back, okay, so that, the back of, just so I know, the unit that used to be the house and is going to be a new unit, or...
No, sorry, the ones...
That's okay.
If you look at the four that are going in there.
The 21, 22, 23, 24?
Yeah, so I'm the first one in, so basically the back of their house will look into...
Yeah, it's definitely the time to add landscaping to the conversation, we'll talk about that for sure. And is there anything else you want to add to the outline?
No, but I will get an opportunity to speak before you guys vote.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
All right, is my first?
Yep. No, well, welcome, and I'm glad you're here. I...
Landscaping and screening, maybe?
Yeah.
May I look at your draft agenda?
You may, that's my guess.
You carried this around for a while, haven't you?
Yeah, you know, I was lucky to find it.
I can tell.
A little low.
Is this dot matrix?
Wow. Anybody else have anything to add?
We haven't discussed it yet, but we do intend to provide landscape screening in the rear of these units, and we can prepare a landscaping plan and add that to the record for discussion.
Yeah, that'll probably be really helpful. Yep. Okay. The next item on the agenda is we typically schedule a sitewalk if folks are interested in a sitewalk.
Well, would that depend if it's a major or minor revision?
Not necessarily. I guess it depends if people want a sitewalk, but I think that that might factor in, if people feel that it's minor, they might not feel they need to. Are people...
I'd like a sitewalk, in particular, for five, for Five Elm Street?
Yes, the new, the old house, new unit.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I wouldn't mind actually, at the same time, just taking a twirl and seeing the whole thing.
Great.
Okay. So we very often do them on Saturday mornings at nine. This is an opportunity to walk the site, ask some general questions. No testimony is not a part of the hearing process. No testimony or commitments are made at that point, but it's a nice way to get to see what is happening and what might be happening, and things that might affect pieces of our decision. So the public is welcome, the planning board members work to support that. So I don't know, what is everybody's availability on Father's Day weekend?
On Saturday?
Saturday.
I'm running in the Timlin race, so...
That's Saturday?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Good for you. Maybe the following Saturday is, what, the 22nd?
We'll be out of town.
You'll be out of town?
I'm out of town, yeah.
All right, we're going to have to pick one, see this is how it goes. The other thing is that, for example, I was not able to go to one at the time it was scheduled, but nothing keeps us, I presume we're welcome to go out if a member is not able to go to the walk itself, can go and walk around and see it.
Of course.
So is the 15th work for everybody else?
What about a Thursday?
What about what?
A Thursday. Maybe more people would be considered, yeah, a Thursday.
Thursday.
Evening, or...
Yeah, just evening. Maybe, it's dark at 8:30 now, so maybe 7, 6:30, 7, would a time during the week work for people?
It's not perfect for me, but I leave it to the other members of the board. Does somebody want to do a weeknight or a Saturday morning?
For me, it depends more on the particular day, whether Thursday or Saturday is better, so I don't object to a Thursday.
All right. So Thursday would have to be after the 15th, right? Would we, I mean, you'd have to post it tomorrow morning if it was going to be this Thursday.
So technically, if it's a sitewalk without any deliberation, you don't have to post it?
Don't have to post it? Do we usually post it?
We do usually post it.
Yeah, okay, that's what I thought, so. I love checking boxes and keeping it, you know, but we could post it tomorrow morning. You, we, that's cute of me to say we. You folks could post it on tomorrow morning, and it would be in time for Thursday afternoon if we picked Thursday.
If you do, by the 8 o'clock, and then decide what, what time in the morning, 9 o'clock?
No, she was talking about in the evening.
Oh, PM, oh, okay.
Yeah. So 6:30 PM this Thursday, or 9 AM on this Saturday. What's your, what's your pick there, Amy?
I don't think I can do either of those this week.
That was a lot of work. Frank?
Well, it's also Thursday and Saturday, that might be better. But I've been there, I can, it's not, it's not a big deal for that.
Jerry?
I can't do either.
Can't do either? Okay, so the next weekend, you're away?
The following weekend, yeah.
Yeah.
But I can do it on my own.
Okay. How about you, Patrick?
Available next Saturday, 21st.
The 21st, 22nd?
Yeah.
Okay. So how about Saturday, the 22nd at nine?
I can do that.
I'm going to bow out, my future is unpredictable at the moment, I have a family member who's L, so...
Okay.
Yeah, so I'm going to go on my own.
All right, so, okay, I don't want to, okay. If we tried for the Thursday, you just, would you just rather go on your own, it's more flexible?
I think I'd just rather go on my own at this point.
All right, I'm just checking my calendar.
Unless it was this Thursday, well, you know.
Mm-hmm, okay. I am available on the 22nd.
22nd is okay for me.
Frank?
Probably.
I'll go on my own.
Okay.
I can make the 22nd.
Okay. And Mary, you're away. And I don't know about Dave, if you can shoot him an email just to let him know, we've got one planned for... So it'll be the June 22nd, Saturday, June 22nd at nine. Where should we meet you?
Would you like to start in the subdivision or out on...
Probably makes sense to be in, so we can park our cars off of West Elm. So where's a good place?
So I think that the location of the units will be self-evident when you pull in, and they just meet right there.
Okay.
It'll be easy to see.
So the new units?
Yeah, where, yeah, the area that hasn't been developed is somewhat self-evident.
Saying self-evident, so I won't get lost?
Yes.
It's a lot of responsibility you're taking right there.
Feel good about it.
Yeah. Okay. All right.
And you'll see coming into the site where the existing building has been taken down on West Elm as you drive by and come up to the...
Okay, so we got a visual.
Okay, I'm just putting it in my calendar.
He said the existing building is gone.
Or 9 AM. Okay, thank you. So we talked about the Conservation Commission filing, that is to be done, and so we don't have a status on that. Do you think we should decide on the internal units, the major and minor, before we keep going? What do you...
I just have one question, because I sort of caught the tail end of what you said. You said you can tell when you drive in where the existing building is gone? Which building are you talking about?
Well, it's the, it's the proposed site for the two duplexes. If we put the site plan back up, I can, I can be specific about direction. So as we come in the entrance, at the very top, the dark areas are two unconstructed locations.
Yeah.
And that's where we're going to be. So it's going to be right in front of us when we pull, so if we drive in, you can just pull over to the right, and we're going to be there.
Okay. Yep.
Just from a process perspective, I actually think it's cleaner to talk about these separately, at least discussion-wise, that's my take on it. I don't know if that makes it messier, but I just sort of feel like we're talking about some design changes that may or may not be impactful, and we're talking about, you know, the location of a unit, that is kind of its own entity.
Yep. I don't disagree. You mean, so to run through the whole process for the two sets of two units?
Well, I mean, it sounds like, like, if I understand it, is it first we decide whether the changes are...
That's what I was just, yeah, just asked.
Minor or major.
And I feel like, I feel like that for the two sets of two units is a different discussion.
Yes.
Right.
I would agree, and I just, even in terms of the public that's here, I don't know where other people's interests lie, but I mean, maybe we can make things a little bit more efficient and talk about one first and then move on to the other.
I'm fine doing that. So we'll talk about the changes to the 21, 22, 23, and 24 first? I feel like that's going to be easier.
And even a lot of the agenda items, those are going to be really quickly, because I don't think there's a lot of impact there.
I think so too. Yeah, I think so too. So I don't think there are issues with zoning compliance. There are no issues, I don't think, in front of us as far as road or lot layout and design. So stop me if you think that I'm going too fast past it on these, on these. Stormwater management is sort of not applicable, because that was done, right? Utilities for those, for 21, 22, 23, and 24, all part of, or nothing's changing with those?
Right.
Open space and remaining land ownership isn't going to change, or trails isn't going to change?
No, that's correct.
Does the ConCom have to review those changes? I didn't think so, okay.
Not 21 through 24, no.
And there are historical features to be discussed with those units?
None.
None? Gone. Okay, so landscaping would be the issue that is in front of us to talk about for units 21, 22, 23, and 24. So this is your moment, Lori. And if somebody could give her a spot to sit there and explain her comments, that would be helpful.
So, again, my name is Lori Hurley, and I live in unit number two.
Can you come in and sit? Yeah. And I was the first resident of Mass Penock Woods. So I'm here tonight, there's nobody who wants those dirt mounds gone more than me, I can assure you of that. But I'm here tonight to ask for your help. We, we have, there's some major issues going on in our complex that we need to have addressed, and despite countless emails, phone calls to Chuck and Inspection Services, who's been wonderful, helpful, intimate, Habitat, we're still dealing with these issues. Most of us moved to this condo, so we wouldn't have to deal with landscaping, or deal with some of the general stuff that you deal with in your house. We pay a monthly fee for that to be taken care of. But many of us still do the maintenance ourselves. Two neighbors just this week have planted seed in, around their yards and their units. I personally, every year, go out and trim all my own landscaping, because as you'll notice, it's growing up the infrastructure. So two issues, landscaping that exists and landscaping that you would like to see in place when these units go in? Yeah, and I can be more specific. So I'll start with the gutters, because to be honest, it's a deeper problem than just landscaping. So if you go to slide two, I've tried to give you some visuals of what the sides of our units look like. From sprinklers fully exposed to the line buildup on the side of the house, water's washing away from the dirt and the lawn on the sides of our house, and it's, in some cases, it's leaving very large holes. All of our units have gutter issues. They have attempted to fix, they've attempted to, they clean them. It's still not fixed, there's still a problem. So that's, so then, that's slide two. If you go to slide three, I have personally five cracks in my foundation. Last year, the condo did pay for one of the cracks, because it was leaking water. The condo association will pay for a crack if it's leaking water. But the one that you noticed on slide three, because that one wasn't leaking water, it was six feet long, cracking, chipping, and getting worse. I chose to pay for that myself. I had two separate experts come into my unit, and I showed them the drainage problems and my cracks. They both agreed that they were most likely caused or contributed by the drainage issue I was having. From the day I moved in, I have complained from my very first punch list that the gutter drainage and lack of landscaping, but until there was water in my basement, there was no action from Habitat, other than just cleaning the gutters. Yes, the debris does help the draining to fix, but it needs to be fixed properly. Slide four shows how Habitat has addressed our concerns. They continue to throw dirt, rocks, and finally, I have some sod, but these are all short-term Band-Aids, and they're not addressing the root of the problem, which is the construction of the gutters. Many of my neighbors, a couple of them have already complained that they have cracks in their foundation, and we do realize sometimes your house just settles, but they're going to get worse, and it's our problem to fix when they're gone in two years. Drainage in general is a problem, so if you go to slide five, the pictures are really hard to see, but I'm trying to show how, on the sides and back of our houses, we need those, through every picture in there, those trenches are several inches deep. On the side of my house, I have no grass, and I have a major ditch. I do not let my kids run down there. They're going to twist, those young kids running, they're going to twist an ankle. There's no, I have no grat, dirt, or it's mud. It's, you need someone to come out. It's a retaining wall, it's sod, I'm not sure, I'm not the expert, but what's there is unacceptable. There are several units, North Pond, some of those pictures are from North Pond, so when you do your site tour, please go around, I would love for you to go around behind the buildings and look at some of the concerns that I'm bringing up here. I wasn't going to bring up the lack of landscaping, which you'll see on the last slide, but after speaking to my neighbor this week, who had to pay for his own exterminator to come out, and I personally have dealt with ants and spiders, which you just attribute to new construction, it's very possible that it's also due to that we've got landscaping that's crawling up the sides of our house. As anyone knows, you should not have landscaping touching your house. And that also, because of the drainage of the landscaping, could be contributing to our foundational issues. So I stand here tonight to ask for your help with these issues to be addressed permanently, not these short-term. Those units in front of me, I realize that Habitat just says they will do landscaping. They haven't proven in three years that they've been able to do proper landscaping.
and restorative concerns is a good, it's a good time to look at that as well. Okay, thank you. We have a couple of different things going on. We're very much paying attention to your concerns, and we're kinda, I'm making the decision to wrap it into this process, but we have to stay true to the process too. So I appreciate it. I don't think that this board is gonna sort of mandate ultimatums and things like that. We're gonna choose to work with the developer to try and address the concerns going forward. But I understa, I appreciate that you brought them forward, and that they're frustrating.
If I may, through the chair?
Yep.
So, Ms. Hurley, you came in before us before, I remember that was, I think, in the other room.
I think that was Katie Edwards.
Okay.
Yeah, you actually have to be over here by the mics, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that was Katie Edwards. She was the unit that's next to, I think they wanted to change the one of the units at the end of the...
And did she have the same or someone problems?
Oh.
Are there other neighbors here?
Go ahead, Steve, put him aside.
Hi, I'm Peter Siffen, SC.
You have to come right up for the mics, sir, so that you can be heard by the folks at home.
I have a new resident there, it's less than, the end of this month will be a year for us. I mean, I've seen the issues. Our house so far, we have not had the breaks in the concrete, or whatever. However, the gutters were initially right up front, they did install wider gutters, seemed to be working, they just, this week, we're cleaning them out, because mine was starting to overflow again, cleaning it out will help, we'll see it again tonight, so that should be okay. But some of the issues that Lori was talking about, in terms of the general landscaping, where the topsoil has been washed away, it's down to like, you know, gravel, rough stuff, a lot of spots, I mean, there are a fair number of areas where that is still present, you know, going on. I know they've been bringing in, you know, landscapers as each of these new units, and they did, for example, our area, touch it up, and they did reseed it this year, still waiting for some of that grass to come up.
Sure.
But, I mean, I'm relatively new there, I haven't been here as long as Lori has, so...
Right, thank you.
Okay.
All right. So, any questions or comments?
I think that, I haven't seen comments from a scientist yet, but the, this shows that we should probably look at stormwater management again, because it's causing the rats, and not operating as it should, so we should probably highlight that as something that the scientists should review, that Beta should review.
Yeah.
Take a look at.
I was just imagining, like, being right near Mass Pinock, that there is just ground, like, the water level is high, and I'd imagine there's water in people's basements requiring some pumps, and I don't know how that should be factored in here in any type of design considerations, project considerations.
Like, when you see cracks in a foundation, it's obviously, there's a certain aspect of water, and just the groundwater, and any, I don't think there's necessarily relevant to, too relevant to 21, 24, if it's really interior modifications, but it definitely would be relevant to Five West.
Okay. I definitely think that it's worth, we're gonna have a site walk anyway, it's definitely worth having Beta and John take a look at it. I don't know if you'll go on the site walk with us, or go out with...
So they have not submitted stormwater information based on...
No, I know.
Nothing?
Well, they did, they had, it was part of the permit, so this is, would be a review of the functionality, right?
Yes, I guess.
That's...
Review the as-built.
Mm-hmm. At least just, you know, find out if it's a big or a small concern, or no concern. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yes.
Looking for all my planning board members, they're all nodding their heads. And we're gonna go out on the 22nd and see it ourselves. Does the board feel comfortable deciding whether the 21, 22, 23, and 24 are major or minor decisions? I'm comfortable with it being a minor change. I'm comfortable with it being minor as well.
Minor.
So do we need a vote on that?
Uh, yeah, I think that would be helpful. Just if you want me to read the criteria for me?
Sure.
That might be helpful.
Yeah, perfect.
So a minor project is defined as an increase in gross floor area of not more than 5,000 square feet, or the addition of rooftop HVAC, mechanical equipment substantially visible from a public or private street or public place requiring a building permit, or construction enlargement or alteration of a parking area containing five or more parking spaces. That is a minor project.
We haven't exceeded any of that.
Right.
We also have a question from a resident that was submitted by email about heights? And I assume that all of the construction heights are within the special permit guidelines?
Should be, yes.
And we wouldn't do anything, we wouldn't do anything here to decide to exceed those?
We haven't changed the heights in these, with these new duplexes. We haven't changed the height of the, from the original buildings.
Okay.
One thing that would be useful, through the chair, is in the past, when you, I think it was a Lisa model, when there was changes, you had the before and after pictures, and they were colored, and to show what the changes were in relation to what the original was. And here, it's just, we have it in black and white, and it's not, it's not the same clarity as what the changes are.
I think that they were, they're online and color, aren't they?
Yeah.
In a packet, yeah.
I saw it on this.
Yep.
Throw in the packet on the iPad.
So I will entertain a motion to consider the changes for 21, 22, 23, and 24 as minor changes to the special permit.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay. Are people prepared to take a vote, or have more questions on 21, 22, 23, 24? I know we're gonna go see them.
What would we take then?
Well, to approve the changes. It seems we've just decided they're minor changes, but do we have additional questions on those changes specifically?
I guess I have questions about the drainage, and it looks like the drainage wasn't done quite right around the houses of the other units, so I'd like to make sure that the drainage is done correctly on the new units.
Yeah.
So I guess I'd rather wait to vote.
Yeah, I have some, yeah, and I have some questions about the water table, the water table heights, and how the basements are reacting to that.
Yep.
And so I'd like to have some more information from the engineer.
Okay, so just asking for clarity, not necessarily with the design, if the engineer comes back with feedback on the drainage, we'll be able to, but we don't have questions on the design of units. Anybody else?
Previously, I thought the design was more offset, but if this is the change to these side-by-side, more side-by-side, is market-driven or consumer-driven? I think this offset looked better conceptually, but it's been through the design review and board, and this is what your business plan is, and that seems okay.
I have one question. As far as the design is concerned, and as far as the neighbors are concerned, is the new design anymore imposing on the neighbors, other than being able to be screened, because you're popping out into the, you know, diagonal space, which is really cool, by the way. I like how you've done that. But the question is, does it use the lot? It increases the usage of the lot, correct?
It's all still within the building envelope.
Okay.
There's, there's a different shape, but it's within the building, the setbacks that exist for the buildings throughout the units, throughout the development.
Okay, but wasn't there some that, maybe we can pull that up again, some that, some of the jogs that protruded over those lines?
No.
No, they all, they're all set back in?
It meet, both of the units, both before and after, meet the setback, but, you know, we add a the sunroom here, and Deckers enlarge, but again, they're all within the allowed buildable area.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make confirm.
All right. I think that we, oh, I think we have a more detailed discussion coming up on the old house, and the new one going in, and it makes sense to do that after we see the property. I think, from what I'm hearing and what I'm thinking, we need to know that the water is being managed on-site the way that it was intended to be, and is under control. And it would, we need to see a landscaping plan before we are ready to approve these. But it doesn't sound like there are major issues with 21, 22, 23, and 24 on their own. I wonder, before we move on to another topic, if anybody has any big, you know, big concerns about number five, that they can be working on when we continue the hearing? That we know of.
So I drive by that all the time, and it's been a vacant, it's been a decaying structure for a long time, dirt mounds. I just, like, having a septic system on property there, I just don't know how, I have concerns about the viability of a septic system on property, because it's just so wet, like, literally, Mass Pinock can get to water levels right close to the property. That would be one of my main concerns.
So that would be part of the board of health process, but I agree with the concern. And so we're gonna wanna, we're gonna wanna know how that process is going with our other boards, and ConCom, obviously.
We'll apply for title five and find out.
Yeah, and ConCom, I'd get on their schedule as well.
Pardon?
ConCom?
Yes, oh, we'll, we'll apply for both.
Yep. Any, anybody else with anything in particular, before we move to a few other agenda items that we're gonna squeeze in here?
Just wanted to clarify that the landscaping plan will address the concerns of some other window placement being changing, and maybe looking onto the neighbors' property, not on five Elm.
Say that again for me, just so I can hear you.
Sorry, the landscaping and screening, the landscaping plan will address some of the concerns about windows looking over to neighboring properties.
We're gonna provide a screening plan that will be designed to screen the rear of these four units from the units across the street.
And that, I'm sorry, just following on what Amy was saying, one of the abutters was talking about having discussed with you the installation of additional screening with their budding property, so from the, in general, for the development, not for these new units, but in general for the development, rotodendrons and so on.
Mosher's on West Elm Street.
Oh, was there another?
Did you get, did you get this email? I don't know when it came in.
Came in today.
Today, oh, okay. So let me read it into the record, because it's short, it's from John Mosher. I have read, maybe I need my glasses, actually, here we go. "I have read the documents regarding Mass Pinock Woods. I am not opposed to the minimal alterations to the floor plans, however, I did not see building heights listed there as a scale, but no dimensions. Noting the proximity of these units to my house, I am interested in the height. I have also, I also have heard concerns from a resident regarding outstanding issues of completion and warranty within the development." I think we probably just heard about those. "One of the concerns, which I share, is lack of parking." We didn't talk about that. "If there is limited onsite parking for guests, they may look to park in the street. In this location, that would be particularly unsafe. I have had conversations with the site manager to improve the screening between our properties. We had agreed last fall that rotodendrons would be suitable. I am hoping to see those get planted in the near future. I would be interested in the construction schedule as well." Just throwing this in at the end, it would be great if we could enjoy the summer with minimal noise, as this project has been ongoing for years. But that's the, that's the entirety of the email, just so you have it, and the public has it. So if there were conversations with an abutting property owner, and agreements made for screening, that would be pertinent to make sure we address it this, this time too.
Yeah, I'll, I'll look into that, and can I get a copy of that?
Yeah, yeah, totally. It'll all be part of the record that's accessible online, but you can certainly, yeah, yep, absolutely.
From the viewpoint of the parking, I mean, nothing is changing from the viewpoint of the original design.
Yeah.
Each unit has their two parking spaces on it, it's no different than a roadway subdivision.
Yeah. I have a tendency to agree with you that, you know, that isn't gonna change, but I'm just certainly gonna read in his comments, it wouldn't be appropriate to, to extend parking out onto West Elm there, for sure.
What addresses John Mosher at, so won't I go on the site? Does, do we have that information?
I think he said, didn't he? I just gave my email away.
I didn't see it on...
It's on the, it's on the, he's on the overall site plan.
He's right to the left, immediately to the left of the entrance driveway two, is it, Mass Pinock Woods.
I think that's the only house in between.
Number three?
Number three, West Elm, I'm not sure, three, maybe five? Three?
No, five is the new one, or the one that...
Oh, that's right, the one we're talking about.
Yeah, five is...
It's probably, I saw his name on the plan.
Yeah, it's...
Because it's only left to...
It's right here. That's the one right next door, yeah, behind.
So it, not a terrible idea to connect with him as well, yep, you know, limited exposure there, but to make sure that, if you're doing it, you might as well do it in a way that keeps people as supportive as possible.
Yeah, I will.
Okay. When would be our next available time to continue the hearing?
Likely July 22nd.
All right, and the only thing on there was what we just put on there?
76th.
76th.
July 22nd.
So why don't we put it on at 8:30?
What date was that?
July 22nd.
So, June 22nd.
Yep.
Next July 22nd.
And then we'd hope for an update, certainly landscaping plan, but hope for an update.
Talk to board, and also talk to the fire department as well.
Yep, perfect.
And your landscape plan.
Perfect. So I'll entertain a motion to continue this public hearing to July 22nd at 8:30.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. There's discussion, sorry.
I was just gonna add, John Mosher is 13, West Elm, if that...
Yeah, almost 13, 13, appreciate that. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay.
Do you need to do both hearings?
Oh, are there two? Yes.
Permit needed.
Yes, thank you very much. I'll entertain a motion to do the, the site plan for the dwelling at Five West Elm, the special permit associated with Five West Elm. I'll consider that we just did the, let me clarify, how about we do that, how about we revote that? We will continue the hearing for the proposed site plan and unit changes for the units 21, 22, 23, 24, and the special permit for the unit, the dwelling unit at Five West Elm, to be July 22nd, starting at 8:30.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? Sorry about the confusion, thank you.
We will also need to request a continuation of the decision.
Yes, and when would that best be, Kobe?
I think we've been going a week after the hearings, so July 29th.
So an extension to July 29th?
Yeah.
Thank you, appreciate that. All right.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Do you wanna walk us through some of the, I'm just thinking, sorry. The ANRs, if they are quick?
Yes, and also because they need to have a decision by tomorrow, so they can't...
So let's do that. Boom, okay. 27 Reserve, we'll just start in order.
Joe, did you wanna come up and present?
There's just two, right?
Hi, Joe.
Evening, Joe McQuin, here on behalf of Carol Pontramoli. She's the trustee for the Bump's Realty Trust, that is the, she is trustee for the land of her late parents, at 27 Reserve Street, down the end of Reserve Street. The family wants to deed the home, number 27, the homestead, to Carol's daughter, Ashley.
Mm-hmm.
She's going to take what is what... She's going to take what is, what be on the plan in front of you, but the Realty Trust is going to retain parcel A.
Are there any issues or concerns?
No, on this one, there were no issues that were significant. Parcel A is designated a non-buildable lot. So haven't satisfied the zoning. And I believe parcel B complies with all the zoning.
Any questions? Concerns?
Just for clarity, I drove down there, but I couldn't, what makes it a non-buildable lot?
Insufficient frontage and insufficient area.
And plot area. So for A and Rs, you need to have sufficient frontage and lot area for it to be done. You don't have to comply with any other zoning because the endorsement doesn't specify that compliance with other zoning is needed. But if it doesn't comply with one or both, it's essentially a non-buildable lot and it has to be marked on the plan.
I'm not sure whether they're making the change because there's, there's no gain. And they could build one bigger house, they could.
There's an existing home at 27. Ashley would take that. The family would like to retain the land that is not necessary for that building lot. 27 has area and frontage in excess of the minimum, certainly meets all the requirements. We didn't want to issue with town hall, someone trying to give the impression that you could build something on parcel As. We designated that as a non-buildable lot. It's simply land that the family wants to retain.
Thank you.
Any other questions or concerns? I'll entertain a motion to approve the A and R at 27 Reserve Street.
So moved.
Is there a second? All those in, oh, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, all set.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
And then we're gonna do 134, 138.
Okay.
Take us away.
Okay, 134, 138 Old Town Road. Several lots, eight lots from a plan from the 1930s. Owned, two families, two separate owners, own the parcels together. Number 138, the Demmings, would like to sell their home and relocate out of state. So we need to separate the two, two.
Ownerships.
Two ownerships, excuse me, thank you, onto two separate lots. The Andersons will retain 134 where they live. The Demmings will sell to a third party. In order to do that, we need to create a lot around the existing home. They are odd in shape, small in size, but because the parcels were owned in common ownership, the lots were in existence prior to the adoption of the subdivision control law. It's not a, considered a subdivision to separate those two out. So we have attempted to create Lot 1 that the Andersons will retain, Lot 2 that the Demmings will sell. They're approximately the same size and shape, but they do not constitute a subdivision. So we need to separate those through the A and R process.
And they don't necessarily meet the guidelines for frontage and lot size?
Correct, because the lots were created prior to the adoption of the subdivision control law and zoning here in town of, the town of Hopkinton.
So interesting that they're co-owned.
First time in 30-something years I've ever come across this.
All right, so it's not just new for me?
Exceedingly rare.
Exceedingly rare, okay.
Vacation funds.
Questions?
Yes, so the new buyer could technically pretty much knock down most of that house and build a new house.
If they choose to, yes. They'll have issues with construction. They'll have to meet certain setback requirements. Imagine the Board of Appeals would have to weigh in on a couple of those topics. But conceivably, yes, they could.
Anybody else? Did you have any issues beyond what we saw in our package, John? I mean, just explaining it to us. Okay.
No, so, yeah, the attorney.
Did the research? Tom, did you have anything you wanted to add, or?
No, I was doing a great job.
Okay, okay. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the A and R for 134, 138 Old Town Road.
Salute.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, all set. Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Yeah, so we'll just need to get these endorsed.
Signed before we leave.
Do you want to do it now or at the end of the meeting?
How many do you need, Kobe?
Pardon?
How many people do you need to sign it to? Do you guys wanna just go over and sign them? That would be awesome. Can we approve minutes while they're signing?
No, because we.
Because what?
We haven't reviewed them because we just got them.
No, we got minutes from April 22nd and May 6th.
Sorry.
Yep, nope?
I have a minor modification that I'll get to Kobe for 22nd.
For the 22nd, okay. Is, does anybody willing to move the minutes with a minor adjustment from Deb to Kobe on April 22nd?
Salute.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? I'll entertain a motion on the minutes from May 6th.
Salute.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Another awesome job, Kobe. Thank you very much. We'll see how Patrick measures up. No pressure to the new guy.
No pressure, sure, no pressure.
So we do have those minutes, and you must have sent them to.
Everybody.
And.
She's seen them.
Perfect.
And we have the May 2nd minutes done. I just, they got lost in the shuffle, so they're, they'll be in the next meeting.
Yeah, perfect. Yep, perfect, so we'll have another couple of sets. Okay. How about the discussion, I want Deb to be able to listen to this. We have a few minutes. The discussion on the mission statement that we got hot up the presses. Is this a new timeline, too, Amy?
Yeah, that bit down a little bit.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Did that come to us and I just missed it?
Just today.
Okay, okay, all right.
I just wanted to make sure.
Glory of activity today.
Glory of activity today. It's all right, I like it.
Glory of paper.
Okay, I'm gonna just take a minute to read the mission statement. I don't know if other people have already done that.
Thought I was reading the same thing.
So I can provide a little bit of.
Yeah.
Commentary on this. And Rob, Mary, and I all had a chance to take a look at this. We had some, a little bit of back and forth today.
Fair enough.
I think the big debate for us was really how detailed to get. And what we tried to do here is break out, you know, the mission statement as something that was a little bit more mission-centric. And we wanted to capture, that first sentence is actually from the Vision 2015 document. We just thought it captures sort of the spirit of what we want to be in a fairly general sense. And then what happened was is that some of the, I think within the deliverables, just as we sort of blurred everything together, we felt there were some objectives, some more specific objectives that were worth pulling out that kind of speak to the aim of what we were doing. And then the deliverables were really those specific documents, so to say, that would be an output of the process. So this is, you know, in our eyes, very much still in draft form. And I apologize to not get it to people sooner. I know people are reading it for the first time now. But what we'd like to do is get your reaction to it. See if there's anything substantial or major that's missing. If there's anything in it that you don't think belongs, and then we can go ahead and finalize it for the next meeting. It's our goal.
I would, there's nothing wrong with it. It's a great start, thank you. I would like to add preservation of existing natural resources to the mission statement if everybody else is amenable. At least contemplate that. And then it may be captured in this, create a plan of action that includes cadence and deliverables. I love the little military reference. Awesome, awesome. For ongoing residential growth assessment. My sort of thinking out loud, big box thinking, I would like to make sure that we have some sort of actionable process for the major stakeholders in town to come together and assess the information, the impacts, and, you know, the go-forward planning. So I think, you know, all the major players are very invested. We just don't really have the structure to have the ongoing conversation over time.
So maybe what we can do is we can add that as a sub-bullet or something like that to just. And it's funny because, I mean, Rob had some comments in it that were effectively, you know, resource requirements and support from town staff. It seems reasonable. I mean, to me, the key theme there is that it's a, you know, multifaceted committee of stakeholders that are a part of the ongoing process.
Yeah, I guess when I envision it, right, this is a major effort, which is awesome, right? It'll be a small band of dedicated volunteers. But that there's some go-forward process that's sustainable, actionable, and buy-in across.
So we would make that a number five on the deliverables?
I mean, I definitely think that, for me, I'm just saying for me, for me, having something that is, that is sustainable over time is really important.
Yeah, so I would just push back. I think that does roll up for me under number four. And I'd be hesitant to put it as a fifth one, just because, I mean, it's a deliverable. So a plan of action, I think, should incorporate those stakeholders and be involved.
Yeah, I'm totally fine as long as there's, I mean, I would advocate for, in one voice, I would advocate for some contemplation of the process that we think today is workable with the committees we have today, knowing that, you know, in 10 years or five years, you know, elections happen and boards change and people might have a different idea of the best process. Like the Financial Working Group that started, you know, eventually kind of shifted and disappeared.
Then if we were to add it to number four, what I would take out would be the specific residential. And I would say the growth assessment that receives support from major stakeholders over time.
So it's a good point. We talked about that as well. And where I got hung up on it is that growth of, growth of what? So with residential growth, that's something that we can measure via dwelling units. If we're just talking about growth in the town, that kind of becomes more, I don't know how to define that.
But this is, it would be, well, then it would be defined as residential and commercial. Because one of the targets that I think we want to point at is the commercial development and how we can better bring in commercial people and businesses to promote a healthy environment and how, and how we can do that to sort of match our residential growth as well.
So would that be something that could be expanded upon in item three? So in item three, you contemplate identifying and prioritizing parcels and zones of the highest potential for residential growth and recommend optimal land uses and practices for each of them. But there could certainly be necessary discussion about land uses that aren't necessarily on those big, scary, lovely open spaces.
So they can be, you know, industrial A and industrial B.
Yeah, we might contemplate ways, like, one of the things, and I have no idea if it comes out of the meeting, but, you know, because I get this opportunity, I say it. You know, it might be the time to actually designate some funds to get a professional to help us populate the industrial sector with, you know, more commercial possibilities. And it might be the time to talk about somebody who helps us really vitalize downtown. It's just something that could easily be part of the discussion.
So I'm just, let me.
Well, mine is another thing I wanted to add, but do you want to wrap up this part?
I guess I just, and I, I was torn on this. I'm curious to hear thoughts from other people on whether this should be focused specifically on, I mean, the hot button is really residential growth. And in so many ways, I wanted to include commercial as well, but then I just was worried it was getting bigger and less defined. And now we get into more financial models and tax, I just, I was worried that it was creeping a little bit potentially beyond, I think, what we were trying to do. And I could go either way. I don't, I agree with Deb and I think that there's a balance there, but I'm just curious to hear from other people if.
I wanted to add something if we can, or think about adding something about getting feedback from the public about where they want the town to go, I guess particularly in commercial. What do they want the downtown to become? Do you want it to be like Hudson, their sort of revitalization? Or some other towns have done downtown revitalization? Make sure we have that buy-in before we try to bring businesses in that turns out people don't want that type of business.
Right.
So I guess it's some kind of, something vague, I guess, about public input is part of the.
Well, I think, so, I definitely think we, as part of our process, we contemplated intentional outreach and public input, right?
I just don't see it listed.
I agree.
But I would argue that's not a deliverable.
No, it's not a deliverable. It's a tool or a process that the team itself would go through. And if we want to, you know, it's really a question, as Gary said, of how specific are we trying to get here? Are we dictating everything that they're gonna do? And I don't think we are. I think that, you know, part of it, you know, when we're charging them with this mission is coming back and checking in with planning board every once in a while, tell us about your progress. And, you know, it doesn't all have to be written down here. But speaking to the other issue of the commercial versus residential, I would say residential is most of the growth concern, but we need to express the financial assessment and so on and forecast about the balance and about the difference in the tax base versus cost, which we had in an earlier iteration and we talked about a little bit. And I don't think you, by simplifying this outline, you know, in the last draft, I don't think you meant to eliminate that entirely, I think. But I think that's, it's the balance between the residential and commercial growth that might need to be addressed. Then, yeah. I think pretty strongly that from a land use perspective, we have to contemplate it, but I totally understand your point. It's why this is so hard to capture.
I guess what I'm concerned about is trying to, I mean, pretty soon this becomes all, it becomes master plan. It becomes selectmen jurisdiction. It becomes, I mean, I just worry a little bit that it becomes, and that's what I was gonna say, is that if, maybe if there's specific areas that, and whether it be the large tracts or land, I mean, if there's ways that are, that we can build that commercial growth consideration in.
Maybe, so maybe, I'm just throwing this out as an idea. So obviously, we're very concerned about those potentially developable, large tracts of land. But we also have a focused interest on commercial development in the areas that are currently set aside for commercial development. And I think we also have a well-established pattern of interest from the residents, though I think it's a very important point that we don't necessarily know anymore what that specifically is. If we ever did, that residents would like the downtown to be more of a destination for some commercial shopping, eating, enjoyment.
So what if we do this? I'm wondering if it's worth adding a fifth deliverable that somehow incorporates the desire. the desire to expand our commercial base. And I'm a little hesitant on the downtown piece because we also had a downtown revitalization committee. I mean, there's been a lot of work that's gone into that, and I just don't want to be repeating things that have already been done, but.
My concern is that we have this huge tract that our forefathers gave us on on South Street. And it's just so beneficial. And and how, and it's just, I just think it's a diamond in the rough. And we just need to figure out, like, like, like you said, Muriel, how how can we better utilize it? And do we need resources to help us figure that out?
So so what if we add a, going back to, we had a fifth bullet of recommendations, something to the effect of recommendations on on how to increase or grow the commercial base within town? Something something to that effect.
Yes, you were going to say something. I'm nodding along.
I, so this, this was, this was today's discussion is the the balance between being too prescriptive and taking kind of the power out of any committee and basically saying do the X, Y, Z, and empowering a committee by trying to be broad enough that they have leeway to to do certain things. A draft, like Mary said, prior draft was much more prescriptive. And it had some, like, all the things you're talking about right now were incorporated.
Yeah.
And we kind of backed away. I I could go either way because I want whoever's working on this project to be empowered, but I also want an output.
Right. I totally, I'm totally nodding along, and this is the grand challenge. I also want to say that I really strongly agree with Amy that the best products we've ever gotten and the most workable products that we've ever gotten and the most buy-in we've ever gotten is when we are very intentional about community input. And for me, this whole effort really hinges on finding out what people would like us to be focusing on in particular. So, I mean, I just, I don't necessarily know that it has to be the mission that there's community engagement, but there is certainly an expectation that there's going to be some very intentional community engagement. I I feel pretty strongly that, did you, go ahead, no, go ahead.
So two things that I wanted to just bring up is, I don't want to add more work to probably my plate, but there may be a deliverable that comes out of the public input. And it's just kind of a memo or summary of what the public has actually said so that it's in writing in front of the committee. And maybe that's one of the first things that gets done so that the the committee kind of has a direction. The second one is, it's kind of part of number three, where it's the forecast model. But one way to really put the fear of God in people is to do a build-out analysis. And for those of you who might not know what build-out analysis is, is either the planning department or we hire a consultant basically looks at the land as it's zoned now, the parcels as it's set up now, and determines what could be built without a special permit as it stands. And it's usually a lot higher than people think. And so that's basically growth that you cannot control. It's done by right. And it's a good idea of what can be done based on the zoning that's in place and what's still available land. It is a significant undertaking, but it may be beneficial as a discussion point and kind of a picture moving forward.
John, so when you say it's a significant undertaking, what kind of timeframe and how does one go about planning that?
So it could be done by a consultant. I don't know the scope at this point. I'd have to look into it. But it would be several thousand, several, ten thousands, maybe, depending on how detailed you want to get. Because you're really looking at every parcel and you're looking at the zoning and you're looking at development schemes on those parcels. Obviously, sorry, go ahead.
Just going back to the cost, is it tens of thousands or hundred thousand? Because I mean, I look at what it costs us to assess the roof on a school, and that seems to cost a hundred fifty thousand dollars. So I don't understand how this would be done.
It depends on how detailed it can be. Because you're looking, if you're doing it at a consultant rate, you're looking at billable time, and they're going to be doing a lot of different analysis and stuff like that. So it's really hard to tell how much this is exactly going to cost. I can try and find RFPs for that type of thing to see what other towns have requested. But it can be, I mean, you can do pretty generic and it wouldn't take that long. And it could be cheaper. And that's kind of just whittling down, and it kind of builds into the priority parcels where, based on the zoning, you're taking out all the parcels that don't conform to zoning as it is. So those are gone, they can't be developed. And then trying to figure out, you know, ones that might not be zoned for residential in a way that would add units, those can be taken out. And you can do a general one like that, or you can do really in-depth and look at individual parcels. The larger parcels, basically, how they can develop them with multiple units, if possible, through the A and R process, right?
See, and I would, to me, that, I think that's what we're trying to get at with deliverable number two. It's the forecast model of dwelling unit growth. And I guess maybe anticipated growth isn't necessarily build-out, but it's probably worth establishing that those those bookends.
Yeah, so I think build-out is worst-case scenario.
Yeah.
And how I read this is predictable.
That's fair.
But having that, having that upper limit would be extremely valuable. I I think it would, any point to make would be, well, this is predicted, like any sensitivity analysis you do, like minimum, maximum, predicted, it's just, wait, so I'm a hundred percent for it.
So, you know, not to be a dip-downer, we don't have money allocated for this effort. So it is something to think about where we might find our resources or how we might find our resources if we're going to do that. So it's worth knowing what it costs or what it might cost. And then.
There's grants, a grant perhaps that.
Yeah, and that, yes, right? I nod along enthusiastically, yes. But that is, that's a time thing as well. So just to sort of, you know, throw it all into the pot to stir around and see. Because we we don't have money set aside for this specifically. We may have money, do we have any money in the planning board budget this year or?
I'd have to look.
Yeah, you know, and, I mean, there may be places where we could find some money. I don't know about a big effort, and it, that would be a thing we had to solve.
Knowing what it would cost, we could at least ask for money for a future year.
Yeah, yeah.
There's also the option of an APC helping out. I don't know how much they can do, but the cost.
So I feel like we're amenable. If you're willing to do the research, if that's, those are, you know, possible avenues, that would be really helpful.
So so I'm kind of hearing three things that people want to include in this. One is something around public, public input, incorporating that in some way. The second is something around how we incorporate major stakeholders into the process. And then the third is something around, you know, advocating or, not advocating, it's not the right word, but.
Recommending or?
Recommendations around how we can balance our residential growth with 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 commercial growth.
So I'm thinking maybe a deliverable of, just a report of a summary of the public input received by the committee. That something will deliver at the end, will be a summary of the various public input we'll do. Would that, it's a pretty easy thing to deliver.
Yeah.
And people will know they've been heard and it's documented.
Yep.
Okay, seems fair. Any?
I definitely think that, well, I'm a huge proponent of public input and and taking notes and and remember what people said so that they know that people are actually.
And just keep it vague as a report. That way we can decide, is it a survey, is it a forum, is it, yeah, decide that later.
I haven't figured out how to incorporate that into the actual paragraph, sentence above for the mission statement. But somehow it'd be really nice if we could include that as well. A well-educated, healthy community, I don't know, mission of project examine.
We're going to let the, we're going to let the geniuses that have led us this far.
Yeah, somehow incorporate that public insinuation or public idea incorporated.
Does it work for you, Deb, if we add it as a deliverable, a summary of public, public?
I'd just like to see it in the statement, actual, as a part of the goal.
As part of the mission statement, you mean?
As part of the mission statement, to actually see it in the wording somehow. I I would have to look at it to see.
And is that where you want the natural resources too, Muriel?
Yeah, well, so the last statement was standards in education, public safety, health and recreation. I thought preservation of natural resources was was a good add in that line, to be honest.
So I'm going to, you know, I'm just going to push back a little bit because five is a lot. Four is a lot for me. I always like rule three. So I'm wondering, no, even for these, these up here.
Yeah, well, I'm going to push right back again. I just think that this community honestly prizes its natural resources. We're a community of lakes and trees.
I I don't deny that, but the purpose of the mission is to guide the process. And if we give them five different things we're trying to preserve, then that, it gets harder to balance that out.
Well, which one would you get rid of rather than for natural resources?
I think that's why, I think that's why a previous iteration, previous version of this type of attempt used the, used the term rural character to summarize five, six, seven, eight.
Yes, to to wrap it all in.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
There are other plans in town that might deal with things that you guys want to include in this. The open space plan, they're on them. I think that's going to be up for renewal in like a year or two. So that may be something that could take that natural resources part off of this committee's plate. And there can be a liaison from the growth committee to the open space update plan committee or cut some back and forth on that if you're looking for something.
And and again, I'm not, I'm not, I'm okay including it. I just want to make sure that.
Yeah, I get you, I do.
That we're being as targeted as we can here.
Yeah, if I may point out, natural resources is mentioned in the first line.
It is.
So.
I would, I would go ahead and get rid of recreation and put in preservation of natural resources if I had to pick.
Okay.
I I just, I really believe that, and maybe I'm wrong, but I really believe that this town is focused on, not recreation as well, but it is a part of the balance of our growth and our tax base and our health and safety and.
Okay, is everyone okay with that?
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I have one, I have kind of a place to put the townwide. I think the mission of the project is to have a townwide examination of growth trends and development. Would something like that work? Townwide.
Examine.
Yes, something to that matter. Maybe there's somebody who can wordsmith that a little bit better. But I I like the idea of it just being very open and inclusionary. And I think the second sentence might be the location to do that.
I was thinking the same thing.
Okay, good. Like mine.
Brilliant. Any any other feedback on that before we scamper forward to the timeline? Our next meeting is twenty fourth, and it's full? Because you were, I was noticing you were going right by it. Can you just run down the agenda really fast for the twenty fourth?
We have continued public hearing for Buckland and White, I ninety, I four ninety-five presentation.
How much time do we have for that? Okay.
The Wilson Street drainage issue with War McDowell.
How much time do we have for that?
Thirty minutes.
Okay.
Special permit for nine B Street for historic structures. An affordable housing discussion with R E C Hopkinton about the Chandler and Waylon.
Okay, and what time is that?
That's at nine thirty.
Nine thirty, and we have a half hour for that?
We have, there's no designated time because it goes to the end, we end at ten. There is also the Haynes Farm as-built plan, request for bond release on that schedule.
Okay, okay. All right, so we we do have some discussion points. I'm thinking in terms of the master plan discussion that we keep putting off. You, Amy, who did, who worked on the timeline, Amy and Deb?
Actually, Deb worked on it this time. I had started it this.
Yeah.
What's it look like?
I just, I sort of upped it, upped the ante a little bit. And we're a little bit behind the eight ball. But I was hoping a kickoff meeting. But I think we need to work on a letter, an invitation letter to all those that that would be interested to make sure we get a nice sampling from across the community. So that would have to happen this week. Get that letter mailed out. And so maybe we're already behind the eight ball. If the kickoff meeting for the seventeenth, I think, would be a bit.
Are you meeting with the new committee?
Yeah, that would be, that would be.
So we have to, we have to post the positions for a certain amount of time, and then we have to appoint them. Our next meeting is the twenty fourth, so we're definitely behind the eight ball.
Yeah, so so I think.
Are we at the point today where we could send something out?
Yeah, I would like to make sure we we post the positions, yeah, I agree.
And how long do we, is there a time limit that we need to post them for at least two weeks?
We should all know this because we all monkey around with it pretty aggressively, not too long. Do you, Kobe, do you know how long the positions have to be posted for?
Which ones are those?
If we're forming a new committee.
Yeah.
We're posting, we're advertising for people to apply. Do you know how long they have to be posted for? I I don't think it's two weeks. I think it's like ten days. I don't know.
So if we could look at an example of like when.
We could probably look it up in the charter right this second, huh, on our smart. Does somebody want, do you want to try and look it up? Thank you.
If we could post it this week, maybe we could appoint at our next meeting?
Yeah, yeah, so that.
It'd be really nice if we could do that. Because otherwise, we're pushed out till July twenty second.
Exactly.
Okay.
Our next meeting after that, July twenty second?
Yeah, I will not be here next time.
What's our next meeting?
I'm sorry. I will not be here on June twenty fourth.
Okay. Our next meeting after June twenty fourth is. We have July eighth, Mark. Yeah.
July, okay.
But so we may have to, we may, we may have to bump Dave again. Four ninety-five, I think we should try and and appoint next week, next meeting.
But we should definitely not bump Dave too far back because those are kind of.
Maybe I'm, I was being a little facetious, I know.
But, yeah, stay a little bit late, start a little bit early so that he can.
Well, let's contemplate starting at seven, that meeting. That's a really good idea, Deb, thank you for that. If that's okay with everybody. You will not be here? No, okay.
My first miss, but we we understand how it happens.
June twenty fourth or July eighth?
This is July, June twenty fourth is the next meeting.
I will not be here either.
Ooh, plot thickens. So I still think, is everybody still comfortable shooting for appointing on the twenty fourth? Okay, appreciate that. So, given that, and I think then the timeline needs to be reworked anyway, we can talk about that. We should give a little guidance on the posting. Can somebody refresh me what the makeup of the committee was? I have the notes here somewhere, but it was Chamber of Commerce.
Two planning board members.
Two or three planning board members?
Two with two, I'd have to go back and look.
Two alternates.
Two alternates.
Four at large, is that what we said?
Three at large and.
Two planning board, two chamber or business.
Two chamber.
Two chamber.
And two, two alternates.
So it came out to nine.
Two alternates.
Seven and, seven but two alternates, so nine.
Nine, yeah.
Hold on, I'm sorry, my math didn't work. Two Chamber of Commerce, two planning board member, four at large?
Three at large.
Three at large, that's why the math didn't work.
And two alternates.
And two alternates, okay.
And with the alternates encouraged to attend.
Well.
Because I think that's, I think that's kind of a tough thing. When you're an alternate, you kind of slack a little. So if we encourage alternates at in-name only, however, hopefully taking a big part as well.
We're going to expect that people are going to just do it. I'm all for encouraging, but, yes, because if you're an alternate, right, on a committee and somebody isn't there, you've, you can have a voting percent, you know, you get a chance to vote. And not that voting is the whole thing, but you are a functional member of the committee. Okay, so what are we calling this?
I think we said Growth Study Committee.
Study Committee?
Two thousand nineteen Growth Study Committee.
Study Committee. The two Chamber of Commerce members need to.
Twenty nineteen because this.
Live in town. Was there any other?
I don't know if we said they had to be chamber members, but just members of the business community, chamber or business committee? Or did we?
We said Chamber of Recommendations. Chamber of Recommendations.
But however, living in Hopkins, Tim.
Living, yes, that's. Living, yes, that's right.
All right, two Planning Board members, three members from the community at large, and two alternates. Okay, so, do you feel comfortable putting some language again around a posting with that information, or do you want some... Okay. Did you find the...
I did not.
Posting guidelines?
Checking the bylaws, 'cause I didn't seem to see it in the charter, so...
Can I have a question about the Chamber? Do we need to reach out to the Chamber to get the recommendations, and then...
So, so, what typically happens, and somebody correct me if I'm wrong, is that when we reach out to the Chamber for their recommendation, those people are on the committee as long as they meet our guidelines. We don't particularly vote on that.
Do we need to advertise for those positions, or is it really Chamber, essentially a Chamber appointing?
You know, I would advertise the structure of the whole, the whole committee in the language, and that we are essentially interested in applicants for the three at large and two alternate positions, because the, right, the Chamber appointees will not go through the process. But this will let people know what the structure of the committee is intended to be. Can I ask another question? I know a couple people are missing. Is there, is there particular interest on the Planning Board to be the other, the Planning Board designees?
I would be interested in being one of the designees.
I would be interested as well.
You had also said master plan, right?
Yeah, I'd like to look at, but not right away. I'd like to look at the master plan. I have to digest it first, but I would like to look at it and how we can incorporate what we learned from this study, so that we'll have some kind of input. That would be a little bit later.
I would suggest respectfully that only one of the two of you participate in the Growth Committee, and we choose another member, not me. So, just based on, you know, we had, you had certain thoughts, it's just to get diversity of, you know, thought processes and so on?
And that doesn't mean the other person couldn't, like, attend every meeting.
Yeah. No, a hundred percent. I have a tendency to agree, particularly just the dynamics of the three proponents of the moratorium. And we don't know how Dave feels about potentially being interested. I am really interested, and we don't know about Frank, too. But I have a tendency, like, everybody is welcome, right? These are all open public meetings, and everybody is welcome.
I can understand that.
But I have a sense similar...
I have a lot to do, so, I have a lot of work to do.
I'm not trying to shove you out of the nest.
Hey, I've got more work on my desk than, so, that's totally, I mean...
So, we should, maybe if you don't mind reaching out to Dave and Frank, just to let them know we're also interested in gauging their enthusiasm for participating. And I'm just, I'm looking down to my left and to my right, too. I'm very bad at getting to my left sometime. I'm gonna use it over here from now.
Left-handed, it's fine.
We, we really do have to have somebody sort of spearhead the master plan implementation
How do you envision that?
So, it's just, there are, there is a master plan that was written in 2017 with deliverables and a, and an action plan, and we are the primary owner of it, although we are not the deliverable on all action items, but I think we have a, we have a very real responsibility for tracking.
I can spearhead that, if you'd like me to do that. I could do that. I can, I can step aside on this, but still stay involved and, you know, and spearhead something else.
Think about it. That would be great, if that's true, but think about it a little bit. But I think we really do need one or two people to really drive us on the master plan initiatives.
I just wanna go back to the posting.
Yes.
I did find some info.
Yep.
Okay, so, I can't find specifically on subcommittees of the Planning Board, but just in general, if there's a vacancy, the Boarding Committee notifies the Board of Selectmen, and then they give notice of one week about the date that the vote will happen.
Okay. So, in this case, we aren't, the Selectmen aren't doing the appointing, but the one week...
The only vacancy reference I could find in the charter was about...
But we should use the same process.
So...
So, it seems like at least a week notice.
So, my question, it feels like the mission statement and deliverables would be really helpful to include with the posting, because that way people sort of know what they're getting into.
I agree.
The challenge is, I'm just trying to think if there's some way that we can finalize this and use it, but I don't know how we do that without having to wait until the next meeting.
Let me ask this. I have a great deal of comfort in having Gary finish this with our feedback and forward it to John for use, but I don't know how other people feel.
It's fine by me, I just...
I'm okay with that, yeah.
I think we know what we wanna include in it, and maybe even
Thank you for that.
John can edit or push back if there's something I've missed, or something that can be redone, that we can kind of, I can just work with him on that.
And then we can get the posting. The posting should be up for at least a week, so we have plenty of time, not so much plenty of time, to get this done and get it out there, but we should be able to do it by our 24th meeting.
I mean, I'll talk to Mrs. Clark, just to make sure that everything is fine, and if it's not how it's proceeded at this point, I'll let you guys know.
Yeah, perfect, perfect. Okay, so, and then run out of time to discuss the timeline, but I can, you know, send comments electronically.
Is that okay, Deb? Send some comments electronically?
Sure, yep.
You allowed to do that? It's just timeline.
Everybody sends, Deb?
Yeah.
Everybody sends ideas to you about the timeline.
Okay.
And you do not send feedback back to anybody. It's all one-way communication to you, for you to process and put into the timeline, however you see fit.
As long as I can.
Yep.
If I, if I find a stumbling block, I will let people know, as long as it's...
You cannot discuss over email. You can receive their information, and then when we talk about it next, you can, you can point out the stumbling block.
I mean, I can always, if I have a question, I can ask John.
Mm-hmm.
That's fine.
So, if you have burning desires for the timeline, shoot them in one way. Copy, John.
One point about the posting, are we looking at resumes and cover letters?
So, typically, what, there's a form, very odd, what are we looking for?
There's that online form, I don't know if we can get on the Acela.
There's like a statement of interest for town volunteer, there's some standardized...
It's not a, doesn't really feel like it asks, I don't feel like it asks for a lot, though.
Yeah. I feel like asking for resumes and cover letters is a little...
I don't think a resume is necessary, but it would be nice to have them, I mean, maybe it's, maybe it's even, you know, 200 words or less, why are you interested? I mean, just one question, something to that effect. Put a constraint on it, so people aren't submitting a three-page paper on what they wanna do. It's just, in 200 words, why are you interested?
And what skills do you bring?
So, right now, the Boarding Committee vacancies form is up, people can apply online to be on a Board or Committee. Can we just get on that same online form?
Yeah, I mean, I think that if we can utilize a process that exists, it doesn't ask a lot. But we can ask people, we're gonna interview people when they come, presumably we'll have more people interested than we have spots for. And those will be good questions, is that okay?
It's fine. So, this interview process is gonna be on the 24th?
It is.
How much time do we have left?
So, we talked about starting at seven.
Okay.
So, if memory serves, why don't we do it at seven? We'll do it at seven.
If we have, say, eight people applying, that's gonna take well more than an hour to interview them.
We only have half an hour, we start at seven.
What's at 7:30 is 76 May?
Buckland Leonard.
Buckland Leonard. Let's, you know what, let's do it at seven, 'cause who, let's do it at seven. And you and I will touch base on the agenda, and we'll work, we'll figure out how it's gonna work.
If we get, if we get their information ahead of time, it can go out to the committee, so that would...
It will, it will necessarily go out to the committee, yeah.
Then perhaps 10 minutes per person, if everybody's read up on who's doing what, with a couple questions, maybe we can take 10 minutes per person.
There you go, that's an hour and a half. Just in your scenario, basically.
Forty, forty minutes?
Should we have to interview everybody, or can we do final candidates that we interview?
Well, we typically, we typically throw the gates open, and we welcome all comers. So, so, how's this? We're gonna find out, we'll find out how many people, there's a deadline for when you can apply by. So, we impose a fixed deadline, which would be, you have to post it for at least seven days, is that what you said, seven days?
We think, yeah.
We think, if that makes sense. And we would hopefully have, we would, I guess it would have to be like, the deadline would have to be the Friday before the Monday meeting. It couldn't be the Tuesday.
So, I assume that seven days does not include weekends?
Exactly.
So, the 20, if we go backwards from the 24th, seven days would be, the 13th would be when they could start applying, or is when it would be posted? So, that gives us essentially two days.
But we'd have to have a deadline before the meeting.
Yeah, so, basically, we'd have to post it tomorrow or Wednesday.
So, we're looking at the, we're looking at the first meeting in July, realistically, right?
If we posted it on the 12th and accepted applications to the 21st, is that not enough time?
Well, if we accepted applications to the 21st, that would give Monday to review.
What's that?
That would give Monday to review.
Yes.
So, if you wanted more than one, more than one day to review...
Excuse me one second, I'm gonna entertain a motion to open the public hearings on Whisper Way, and to continue them after we conclude this brief discussion.
I would make that motion.
Is there a second?
Take it.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, we'll be right with you. Thank you. Go ahead. Did you finish, or?
So, I was just saying, if we wanted more than one day to review, because we close at two on Friday, so I wouldn't be able to send anything out at the end of business on Friday, so you guys wouldn't have the weekend. I mean, I could send the ones that we've received, but I don't think that would be fair to anyone who submits at the end.
Are we meeting July 8th, or not, or not because of the holiday weekend?
Yeah.
So, I'll just throw one thing out there. I have, at least once anyways, applied for a subcommittee.
Yep.
And their interviews were not at their meetings, it was a separate interview process.
In town?
Yep. It was for the, it was for the Athletic Turf Field Subcommittee. I remember, because I was in Tokyo at the time, so I did my interview by phone with, it was DeKeen, it was somebody from, it was a subcommittee of the school committee. So, I just throw it out there, because, as we're trying to move fast here, and I realize the...
Yeah, time is short, yeah.
I realize we wanna keep everything within our open meetings and whatnot, I just don't know if there's another option. And that's where I was thinking, even if we were somehow able to narrow finalists down, and then the finalists come in, or if there is some way to, to keep this moving a little bit more efficiently. And I don't know how people feel about it, what's appropriate and what's not, but maybe there's some option to advance it outside of our meeting schedule.
I feel pretty strongly that the established process for posting and interviewing and appointing volunteers for something like this is the best way to go. I'm a big fan of complete transparency.
You are?
I am.
I do think we should streamline our interview process in that case, since our meetings are so packed.
Yep. So, maybe have a designated set of questions that everybody answers, which we would wanna do anyway. What do you mean by streamlining?
I don't know, sometimes if we each ask a question, and we, everybody goes around, that's really time-consuming, and I don't know if it really changes our mind either. So, maybe either a super small number of questions, or just have everybody introduce themselves, and I guess, until we know who applies, it's really hard to say, too.
Maybe we don't ask questions, maybe we have...
Maybe just have them...
Have them respond, they give their, they have two minutes, and they make their, just no different than a debate or meet the candidates night, there's a time constraint, and they make their case, we give them an idea of what we're looking for, and then we vote.
There's kind of three possibilities. There's less candidates than we'd hoped for, there's about what we'd hoped for, and then there's an exceeding amount. And what would we do in those three options?
Right.
If it was less, they'd go quick. If it's about what we expected, fine. But if it's more, it's just gonna derail a whole, basically, from now till, like, it's gonna, it's not gonna quicken the process, it's gonna make it longer. So, I look at is, we're potentially setting ourselves up for a failure by having, like, to pick candidates the next meeting, like...
Yes, so July, it seems more reasonable.
Oh, totally.
If we had all the applicants in within, by the next meeting, and we could know how to prepare, I think that would be the logical thing to do.
And we're also assuming they can all be here on July 8th, the Monday after a holiday week.
Yeah, that's a...
Yeah, we are not gonna be able to necessarily entertain everybody's schedule, Monday, July 8th, right, who are applicants, so put that in the, how about this, we make sure people know in the posting that the interview process will be on July 8th, so that they're forewarned. And maybe we make the applicants due by the 20, the 22nd, so we have them at our meeting, we know the number.
That's great, then we can determine the process, depending on if it's a huge number.
And we can determine the process on the 22nd. Okay. Does that make sense, John?
Applications would be due June 21st, Friday, or is it Saturday?
They can come in on Monday by, by two. Yeah, the 24th, I'm sorry. Monday by two, and then you'll at least know the number. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
And we consider our process. Okay, all right. Thank you for your patience. Whisper Way. This is...
Is this new material?
Or was it in our...
When was it? June 10th?
So, we might have that.
Yeah, I think you have, you should have both of these.
Yeah.
The first is the list of waivers.
We have both of these, yeah.
Okay.
So, good evening, my name's Elizabeth Minini from Gary Aaron Hellman. I was involved in this project, actually way back when we were doing the preliminary, and then I've been overseeing it with, with Dan, who has been here at the other meetings. Since Phil couldn't be here tonight, I thought we should try to focus on, not necessarily focus on his letter, since that's not as helpful, and to focus on the things that we wanna make sure that the Board is, doesn't need any additional information from us on. So, the list of waivers is one of the, one of the things that we wanna make sure that the Board is comfortable with, all of the waivers. So, if we want, we can go through them one by one. The first one is fairly straightforward, cross-sections of the road. This is waived in a lot of towns nowadays, there, it's, the way everything works with construction, it's just not as necessary to do the cross-sections. It's not needed in the process of construction the way it used to be. So, Phil had asked us to provide four, which we intended on, and I believe we've already sent over to him, and we're just waiting for final approval from him on those. So, that's just a procedural thing.
Why don't we do them one at a time, and we'll let people ask questions? Does anybody have questions on the first waiver request? So, Phil has asked for four.
Correct.
Which you intended to provide.
We have provided to him, he has not had a chance to review them yet.
Tell me why they are no longer needed in the way that roads are constructed now?
So, everything, basically, all the information that we need, or that the contractors need, is in the computer, we have it in the computers. we have it in the computers. Um, this, it was really something that was needed back before we could easily provide that information. Um, so they would use it to do cut and fill analysis and things like that. And the computers do all that fun stuff now.
Right. Might be something to look at, huh? Anybody else have questions?
Um, just to...
Yes, sir, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, did Beta agreed that they were not necessary?
They, he, he agreed that we should, or he requested only four of them.
Yeah.
Um, just, and that's, and basically that's to give you what a typical cross-section would give you. Um, and I know that he's picked those specific spots for a reason. Um, the first three are in that wetland crossing area. So, um, just to, again, kinda give you a better idea of what the, what the cut and fills are gonna look like in that area.
Mary?
Um, thank you. Um, on Beta's letter of June sixth, he just said that the cross-sections that have been provided thus far and the detail sheets are not clear, so you have this comment from him?
Yep, we've, we've actually already, um, revised them.
Okay.
And so resubmitted them to him, and again, we're just looking, um, just to make sure that they're exactly what, uh, he is looking for.
Good.
So, we're very confident that that's not a problem for us to meet his requirements. Um, it's just a matter of whether or not you guys are going to be looking for all of the cross-sections or not. Okay, number two. Uh, trees to be retained within the right-of-way. Uh, as you all know, I think you've all walked the site, the, um, it's a pretty steep site, and in particular, because of the wetland crossing, uh, the existing wetland crossing of Whisper, Whisper Way. In order to bring that, uh, right-of-way into compliance, there's, uh, there's, I guess, enough grading that's going on, that we're really grading the total width of the right-of-way. So there's no, there's really no opportunity for us to save trees within the right-of-way. Um, obviously, it's open sta, open space subdivision, we're gonna save as many trees as we can, um, but that's gonna be outside of the right-of-way. So, since we're not able to really save any trees in the right-of-way, we're just asking for a waiver that we don't have to show the trees that we can't save.
Anybody have any questions?
So, um, I guess, a couple of questions or comments on that. So, um, how, remind me again, how wide is the right-of-way?
I believe it's...
It's fifty feet wide.
Fifty feet wide. And, and so I, I understand, in particular, where there's substantial grading going on, and that the, you know, the, there's some work to do outside of the roadway width, but in parts of the development that are not as steep, there's no opportunity, and I, I, I guess I, I mean, that, that, that bylaw exists because we like, I mean, we generally like neighborhoods much better that have some mature trees, and it adds a lot to the look and feel and the, the rural character that we talk a lot about, and so I guess I'm struggling a little bit as to why no, but why, why no trees within the entire street can't be preserved.
So, um, the, the way that we can see what can or can't be saved, um, is within the, the right-of-way lines, um, the grading that, in this, these are all, these are minimum, actually, we're, we're grading, that's another waiver that we're asking for, um, grading within the right-of-way is required to be three to one, and we're actually grading it at two to one to try and skinny it down as much as we can. Um, but even at two to one, the grading, you can see over here, um, comes all the way over to these grade lines, come all the way over to the edge of the right-of-way. So, even in areas where it's not as steep, because we have to carry minimum and, and stay under maximum grading, um, you basically are catching up with, so, it would be nice if we could be, the existing Whisper Way is really steep within this area, much steeper than we're allowed to be in, in the new, within new regulations. So, we have to shallow this out, which means that this gets steeper, even if, even if right now it's not quite as steep, we're steepening it because we gotta make up the difference, is the, is the best I can.
So because you can't follow the natural contours of the land, you have to disturb more soil, which means you have to...
Yes.
Effectively eliminate all the trees in the right-of-way.
Yes. I, I can see if there's a, if there's any areas, but I, I mean, o, over here, we're, we're well outside of the right-of-way, um, with the, um, with the contours, so...
Those mirrors around the cul-de-sac?
No, that's the, the, in the cul-de-sac, we're way out.
Oh.
Because the, the maximum grade in the cul-de-sac has to be less than in the rest of the road, so by flattening out a large area like that, you're creating more grading outside of it.
So, so I'll just ask one more question, so, so have you considered at all, um, replacing some of those trees with new trees?
Uh, I'm, in areas that, in areas where it's not, uh, where we don't have two to one grading, um, we could, we could potentially do that, um, on, you're not gonna get any vegetation to, you're not gonna get a tree, it'll, it's not a good situation to put a tree in a two, on a two to one slope. Um, shrubbery works well on a two to one slope, but not a tree. One of the other things, just, you know, to follow with the, you don't wanna just have a big wide open, um...
Runway.
Yeah. Uh, the, almost all of these houses are gonna be set back significantly from the road, um, and we're looking at common driveways for most of these lots, so we're cutting down on the driveways by half, almost. Uh, and the, their existing vegetation, all in the front of the, um, house lots, is, is gonna remain.
You, you don't have the same grading issues on the driveways?
There's, um, there are less stringent, um, requirements for the, for the driveways, they're not as wide, um... I know we're working, that's one of Phil's comments, is we, we have to do profiles for the, uh, and grade out all the driveways, so that's something we'll know a little bit better when we complete that task, but, um...
Can I just ask, is this a function of the challenging site more than anything, and utilizing the road piece that exists?
Well, yeah, utilizing the, the road, the existing Whisper Way is, is certainly, um, part of the challenge, um, because it goes up through a very steep area.
Uh-huh.
Um, whereas if we, if we were doing something from scratch, we may come, you know, we'd have to get up past the, the wetlands and the burnout pool, but we may come across, um, more, um, parallel, couldn't think of the word, uh, parallel to the contours, as opposed to continuing up, um, perpendicular to that.
Just clarifying this question. So, if I'm reading it correctly, they're not required to retain any trees in the right-of-way, because it's not a scenic road, they're just asking for not having to list the ones...
Say it again?
They're not really required to retain any trees in the right-of-way, because it's not a scenic road, they're just asking for a waiver from having to show them on...
Hmm.
No.
Right?
The waiver's from retaining them in the right-of-way, right?
That's not the way it's written.
What does it say here? Trees to be retained within the right-of-way to be shown, due to the narrow width of the right-of-way, the required grading for the roadway, no trees will be able to be retained within the right-of-way. So what is the re, what is the requirement?
The requirement is to show which ones will be retained, I think.
Right.
I wanted to clarify with John.
Hold up the requirement.
Yeah, there we go.
Thank you, Amy.
Yeah.
So I'm worried we're overthinking this.
I can look into this if you wanna move on to the next topic.
So it's not even a waiver, then?
Well, it's a, it's a waiver on the requirement for the trees, that's what I'm saying. What, right, is it really even a waiver? No, if we can't save any trees...
What is the requirement for the trees in the right-of-way? Is there a requirement?
That's what he's checking.
Yeah. Amy, always clarifying. Um, well, he's looking, can we do the, um, proposed streetlights?
Yep, so then, the next one is, um, location of the proposed streetlights. The applicant is requesting that streetlights not be installed within the subdivision. Um, that's, again, that's something that boards have tended to go back and forth on, um, over time.
I'm comfortable with no streetlights, myself, but...
So...
Just go either way on this one, I, I like it to be safe, because somebody can walk their dog at night and, you know, find their way, but at the same time, I don't want to change the light pollution.
Headlamps, Amy, come on now, headlamps!
But then we had the situation at Davenport Lane, where they, the developer just installed more lights, because people were complaining that they had to walk their dogs with headlamps, right? And then they installed something that wasn't dark sky compliant, and we had to approve it after fact. So I'd almost rather approve dark sky compliant streetlights, I, I don't know, but I can go either way if people feel so...
So, I, can we, um, can we waive it, and also, but, 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 you know, make sure we add the requirement that if lights were to be considered, they'd have to be dark sky compliant? I don't know, can we do that?
I don't know. Because I think what happens often when there are no streetlights, that, um, homeowners install a light at the end of the driveway.
Yep.
Um, which, I don't know if that would be required to be dark sky compliant, if they install it later.
Still America.
Yeah.
Can we add this to the, Zach, list of potential takes? Because I, I feel like we are...
We're back to leaning.
Well, believe me, it's on there.
I know, I, I know, but I mean, at, at the end of the day, I, I think that it's, and I think that, that we as a board have made some assumptions, and I, I don't, to Amy's point, I don't know if, I mean...
Davenport wasn't a great example, for sure.
Right.
But we, we did have a discussion about it, and, and it's still, it is still on the work plan. There's, there's, uh, some strong feelings.
I, I guess, you know, specifically the, the streetlights.
Streetlights in subdivision, strong, strong feelings, huh?
Strong feelings, uh, yeah, about dark sky compliant and things like that.
On, on both sides, I imagine?
Yeah, because I'm like, you know, I think really black streets are hard to navigate at night.
So stay off my street!
Uh, it is, it is a dead, it is a dead end, um, with very, you know, there's a maximum of ten houses. Um, and most of these people, when, even when they get to their driveways, are gonna still have quite a ways to go without streetlights, so, um, I don't know that, and the existing Whisper Way doesn't have any streetlights, so, um... Regardless of, you know, how, how you would look at a typical requirement, uh, I think in this particular case, it probably makes more sense than normal to, to not have it. If you're putting in a full subdivision, uh, with, you know, fifty, sixty houses, you know, that, and you have multiple intersections, that's, that's a different scenario, I believe.
Just take the flip side of it, we're gonna have, um, you know, potentially a very long cul-de-sac with very long shared driveways, and, uh, from an emergency response standpoint, that could be challenging. It might be worth asking the fire department to, how they feel about it.
Okay.
We could be arguing the other way, I like my dark sky.
You just can't know how the future homeowners will prefer it.
You can't, no, you can't.
Some people would prefer completely dark, and some would like light.
And most likely, some of the people there will want it, and some people won't.
Yes, right, yeah, we can't win.
You really can't.
That's why you go out there with a flashlight, and shut it on the sensor, and shut it off, I mean, these kids.
That's right, there we go. What if we find out?
So, that section is the definitive plan contents, and it just basically is what you are to include in the definitive plan.
Is what trees are going to be retained.
Says, location, variety, and size of proposed tr, street trees and trees to be retained within the right-of-way.
I feel like that is a waiver that doesn't need to happen, because they're not retaining trees in the right-of-way. Does that make sense?
I agree.
Yeah.
I agree with you.
Look at that. One right off their list. It didn't, wasn't quick. It wasn't pretty, but it happened. Okay. Thanks, Amy.
Um, so with the, with the lights, your, is the board's feeling that you would pretty much go with whatever the recommendation of the...
I think you have a mixed response from the board, but I think, sorry, but I think that, um, it would go a long way to find out what the fire department thinks about the whole thing, including the lighting for response. For me.
Would it be useful to take a straw poll? Because I don't really have a sense of how we feel on it, I, I don't know.
A straw poll of whether or not we want lights or don't want lights?
Because if I'm the only one that wants them, there's no, we can just say we don't need them, right?
We can take a straw poll, lights or no lights?
Uh, I live in a subdivision, Haynes Farm Way, we have no lights, so, if the homeowner wanted a light, it's up to you to put it in, so, I'm no lights.
Even though I prefer lights, I think we have generally waived them, so I would not suggest we change that precedent right now.
A hundred percent no lights.
I'm pretty much a no-light person, myself.
Well, I think Mary makes a good point, but I still prefer dark sky compliant, streetlights.
I like, um, a certain percentage of light. I think that some of the, some of the neighborhoods that we have, the streetlights don't compensate for the entry location of entering safely and exiting safely, so I would say at the end of the street, I would, I would think it would, is ideal, and it's an easy, it's an easy place to put a light, um, even just identify the street itself and, and the, and the, um, street sign. Um, I'm a little concerned that how mu, however much we like dark sky compliant, we have these humongously long driveways that are very narrow, and they're all gonna wanna have lights, and the houses are gonna have lights, so whether we provide them on the streets or not, they're gonna have lights. So, I, I suggest, I, I suggest at least at the end of the street, um, to have some kind of wayfinding device.
Okay, so, I, I would, I think I would prefer some streetlights, but I think the arguments are reasonable, so if I'm the only one, then I think...
I, I would actually make sure you ask the fire department how they feel.
Yeah, no, this is a, this is... Certainly, certainly we will, but...
Yeah, because I mean, I could be, I'm a hundred percent no lights, but if the fire department says, wow, we're, we're gonna struggle in there, I'm gonna think it di, through differently.
Of course.
It's also right next to the highway, too.
So, no, no lights unless the fire chief...
If you remember doing that, what's that?
No lights unless the fire chief says we need them, right?
Yes.
I think that's the decision, right?
Highway doesn't affect, it only affects the farthest right, the farthest right house, the, the one, the ones that are, which is added is eleven and twelve.
Yeah. So waived unless, uh, fire department. All right, road slopes, three to one max, you talked about that already, anything more?
No. Uh, nope, uh, like I said, we're, we're trying to minimize the, um, impact of taking down any trees that we don't have to, uh, so the two to one slope is, um, is not something that we prefer to do, um, it's, but it, it is a, an acceptable practice, um, and from an engineering standpoint, so, um...
Anybody have any questions or objections to that one?
What did Beta say about this one?
You know what?
They just asked, uh, to define the limits where this is necessary, and Beta has determined that they have provided those limits.
Are we okay? Um, disturbance in natural topography, due to the wetlands at Station One plus fifty, depths of fill are greater than eight feet to facilitate the crossings, talk to us.
Uh, so, again, this is actually partially due to the fact that... Uh, so, again, this is actually partially due to the fact that the existing Whisper Way does not meet the grading, uh, maximum grading requirements. So in order to, basically, it comes down too steep and then comes up too steep. So in order to maintain the existing right-of-way and, um, and meet the new grading requirements, we have to fill more than, uh, more than eight feet. That fill is limited to the right-of-way only, that's where we have the retaining wall. So it's, we're not, you know, drastically, we're not changing, drastically changing the, um, grade, except for making the entrance safer and to meet current standards.
All right, and Concom, it is on board with this?
Uh, yeah, that, this is the...
It's from them?
That's, it would be, yes. They definitely do not want us filling more wetlands.
Right.
To be able to, to, um, to create slopes, so...
Okay. Anybody, questions, concerns? I feel like you have a go on that one, too. Um, what's number six? Oh, disturbance in natural topography, again.
Uh, so, again, part of this is just staying within, um, staying within the existing right-of-way. The existing, um, existing road goes through some areas that are over twenty-five percent slope, and, um, and then to, once we get to the end of the existing, which I don't know exactly where that is, but once we get to the end of the existing one, existing Whisper, there's another steep area that, um, in order to use the existing road, we need to continue off the end of it.
It's the same, same thing.
It puts us into, into areas that have twenty-five percent. We, um, avoided them to the greatest extent possible, um, and at some point in the process, we did show you, uh, and I, and Phil had asked for a plan that showed where the areas of twenty-five percent, greater than twenty-five percent slopes were, so that he could see that we were staying out of them to the greatest extent possible, so. We did do it to the greatest extent possible, and we're just asking for a waiver for the areas where we couldn't avoid it.
Any questions?
Just to clarify, this is, uh, this is always going to be a private street, not a town street?
Town street.
It is a town street. So, so those slopes are something that DPW is gonna have to deal with.
But, but it's not the road itself?
No, it's not the...
The land that the road is being built across?
It's the existing, it's the existing road?
Mm-hmm.
Goes through areas, no, the, the new road is gonna go through areas that have an existing slope of twenty-five percent. They will not be twenty-five percent once, once we're done.
Got it.
For particular to the road.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Number seven, go ahead. The side slopes of the detention pond.
Uh, so, again, the detention ponds, typically, we do three to one slopes. We're tightening up all the grading by doing two to one slopes, um, and one of, and maintaining the top of the berm at ten feet so that the, uh, so that the detention basins are just as accessible as they're supposed to be. We, uh, he, we speak about an impervious, um, an impervious core, so one of the concerns that Phil had with us going to the two to one slope was the migration of water from the bur, through the berm. So to prevent that from happening, uh, we are installing an impervious, basically an impervious barrier in the center of the berm, um, vertical. It's the same thing we do for septic systems when we can't meet the three to one slope that is required for those, so, um, I, he was...
Can you show us where that is on the plan?
Well, I, I mean, so, this, this detention basin, um, you know, you can see that we're, this is a steep slope. So, when the water, so, when the water's in here, basically, once you get to the top of the berm, which is right in here, basically right where this dashed line is, um, that's basically where the curvaceous barrier would be, in a vertical sense, so that the water, it wouldn't really come out this way, but, um, so that the, the water can't seep through the side of the berm and, and up the side of the hill into the flooded area.
Anybody have any other questions or concerns, objections?
One quick question.
Sure.
The chair.
Yeah.
Uh, in the Beta letter, there's a waiver seven, uh, for section eight point two point six point A, and that's, I don't think in this letter.
Eight point two point six point A?
Yeah, so disturbance to natural topography, applicant seeks a waiver to provide side slopes two to one when maximum slope is three to one.
Eight point two point six point A is number four?
Oh, right, number four.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
The list in, that I haven't...
It's just different?
In order, okay.
Okay.
My apologies.
Nope, perfect, thank you. Okay, um, is everybody okay with the detention ponds?
Yes.
All right. Uh, oh, and then number eight?
This is also to do with the detention ponds?
Yeah.
And this is actually a new one, uh, so I doubt Be, I doubt Beta has addressed it, but, um, the, or he may have brought up the fact, uh, so, and I'm not exactly sure why this is in the regulations, to be honest, because, uh, but there's a requirement for twenty-five foot setback to property lines. That's not something that's, um, that I've ever heard of, to be perfectly honest. Sometimes we have property lines going right through a basin.
It all starts here.
Because, um, the, the basins are within an easement, so, you know, there's limitations to, to what, um, property owners can do within the easement anyway, so I'm, I'm not sure exactly why the board would care if it's close to twenty, closer than twenty-five feet, but that's, um, due to the, due to the slope and, um, and certainly the challenging site we have with regard to the, to the wetlands, uh, in the Bernal Pool, we are limited in an area, plus there's, and this is actually the same house that's remaining, so the way that the property line sits, there's just really not much we can do to get it further than twenty, get it twenty-five feet away from the property line. If there's a reason that, if there's something that we could do to address concerns, we'd be happy to do so, but...
Okay, so we will have to hear from Beta, but anybody else have any questions or concerns?
I, I just cur, I, I don't know the history of that bylaw, but if we could find out the history of that, like, is it child safety, is it water getting into basements, why, why does that, why?
I think we'll ask Beta for sure.
Even if there's some, so, as far as protection, whether or not it's on a property line is, is irrelevant to, to the safety, that's, there, you know, there's other measures that we take, like such as screening, which is one of his comments, um, which is a little bit of a safety and a little bit of, uh, just a visual, but, um, certainly, again, if there's something that, if there's something that we can do to address a concern, we'd be happy to do so, so...
Um, and we're just, you know, we're going overtime here a little bit to try and drive through your list, so at least this is mostly accomplished.
Yep.
Number one on the backside, the zoning, buffer of a minimum of one hundred feet? Go ahead.
Uh, yeah, we've, I, we have talked about this previously, um, the, any place that we're looking for, um, I know this corner here is, is one of the, um, because of, because of where the existing Whisper Way is and trying to come around, uh, trying to follow that, it basically brings us too close to the property line for us to provide a hundred foot buffer in some areas. Uh, and then, um, I think up where the septic, the community septic system is, um, is also an area where we were gonna be with, in the hundred feet. We're asking for a reduction only to seventy-seven feet, and, uh, it's adjacent to existing open space. So usually this buffer is sorted to buffer the subdivision to the surrounding development. In this case, the surrounding development is just more open space, so...
That we prize. It's not just open space, Mrs. Kramer. Okay, does anybody make questions or thoughts on that in particular? Okay, um, and then the lot frontage depth.
So, um, basically, again, due to the, the steepness of the property, um, we are actually setting these houses back significantly from the road, typically in an open space subdivision, you're kinda pushing, you, they reduce all the setbacks for everything so that you can cluster the houses together. We're kinda gonna, really, we're gonna have more open space along the road and then have the house developments, and then you're gonna have the, the actual legitimate open space. So, um, just the way that the, the lots are constructed or, or laid out to accommodate the common driveways and, and that, um, almost like a pork chop lot kind of, um, scenario, it just doesn't lend itself to being able to meet the lot frontage depth.
Okay, any questions or concerns about that? Again, to the left and to the right.
I just, I mean, I just wanna say, I, I struggle with the shared driveways, and I know that that's, not requesting a waiver on that, but it just, it just rubs me wrong, it just feels like you're, you're, you're forcing a lot in here. And like I said, there's not any one particular waiver that I have an issue with, but, um, I don't know, just...
It's a lot of, um...
Felt, felt the need to say that, it just, it just feels, it feels a little forced, and particularly with the shared driveways, and I just, I know, um, there's a, an appropriate place for it, it just seems like there's a lot of long shared driveways, and there's a lot of things that are being done to, to accommodate that here. So I know Muriel lives on a shared driveway, very sensitive about it, but...
So, the, the length of the driveways actually is one of the reasons that I think it makes the most sense for there to be common driveways on this particular, um, site, because, again, with an open space subdivision, we're trying to limit the amount of, um, of tree growth that we're taking down, and, you know, one of these driveways is eight hundred feet of shared and then another two hundred feet. So if, if we, if we gave you two separate driveways, you're now doubling eight hun, you know, doubling the width.
Well, I, I, I agree.
For eight hundred feet.
It also doesn't make sense to have two driveways running next to each other, which there are in some places you, you do see that, I just...
Right. Um, I, I understand your concerns, I just, um, so I have two points, and I, I really do like my shared driveway a lot, and I like it because I'm set back off the road, um, and when my kids were romping around in my yard, I didn't really have to worry so much about my busy street. And it, you know, in our experience, too, it, it lended itself to building a really nifty little neighborhood where the kids could just fly around. So I can see how it could be fabulous, and I have, I have no objections to it. The thing that I'm struggling with is the one that's not here is the, the long cul-de-sac and the really long driveways. And don't we have to waive the, the length of the cul-de-sac?
So that was a point I was gonna bring up. I don't think the plan board can waive the length of the cul-de-sac.
Uh-huh. He's new.
OS, the, in the open space regulations?
Yeah.
The maximum cul-de-sac length is a thousand feet.
Yeah.
Right now, it's proposed as a thousand.
Thousand forty.
So, that's...
We can only waive it in, we can waive it in traditional, but not...
It depends on, it depends...
Yes, thank you.
It depends on how, the, the, we didn't intentionally propose it, actually, both our firm and the surveying firm both came up with, um, two different calculations that both were under a thousand feet. Your regulations don't specify specifically how to measure the cul-de-sac, um, which a lot of regulations do, so that's certainly something you guys should look into. We can, so, basically, um, there's the two, the differences at the beginning and the end are you can, it can be measured from the edge of pavement or from the edge of the right-of-way at the beginning. I've, and actually, I've even seen it where you do it from the center line of the road. So there's several different starting points that you can go with, and ju, on this, on the other end is the same thing. There's some towns that do it to the beginning of the bulb, some do it to the middle of the bulb, some do it to the pavement at the end of the bulb, some do it to the right-of-way at the end of the bulb. So depending upon how you wanna measure it, um, it either already complies or it doesn't. So if you wanna go along with, um, Beta's measurement, then we'll, um, this is the difference, is the pink to the blue.
Okay.
Pink is what we have existing, the blue is what we, we, Beta would do.
And, I'm sorry, excuse me, the measurement that exceeds, you know, the, the maximum line, that is based on the end of the pavement at the far end of the circle? Is that what it is? It's based on...
Yeah, I'm sorry, yes.
That's what the measurement is based on?
Yes, if, if you go from, um, if you go to the end of the, uh, actually, I'm not a hundred percent sure if it's the end of the pavement or the end of the right-of-way.
Okay, well, that's...
The far side.
Okay, but it's on the far side of that circle?
The far side, yes.
Okay.
It seems like if they could just work with Beta to, to get something that's a thousand, that would be fine, right?
I'm gonna say it again.
If they could work with Beta to determine a measurement that is exactly a thousand...
Yeah, well, I think that we're hearing is that we don't have any authority to, um, to waive it, to waive that.
Right, but you do have the authority to say whether or not, where the measurement is from.
Well, I suppose we probably do, but I think we should probably ask our engineers how they do it so it's consistently done, um, so that we aren't doing it differently for this, um, than any other one.
But it sounds like they can just fix it by...
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's not a, it's not as simple as, there's a whole bunch of lot line changes that have to be made, so it's...
Well, let's find out from Beta, um, how they measure...
Well, obviously, they measured, they, they, they have already said that this is a thousand, it's forty feet too long.
Thousand forty, right?
So if, if you're gonna go along with whatever, then we're gonna, we'll change this so that it, he is in agreement that it's under the thousand, so that, like, my, um, hope is to get a cle, be able to get a, I really think we have a chance of getting a clean letter from Beta prior to the next meeting, so that's why I wanted to get these things, um, sorted out.
So, I, I have it, I, I would opt to comply with Beta's measurements for consistency. I don't know what other people...
We can ask Beta how they've, how they've determined that measurement, whether it's from center line or, or edge of pavement, and then figure out, I'll talk, we can talk to Phil and...
Okay.
All right. Um, so...
I, I would, if I could say something.
Yeah, go ahead.
I would throw a kink into the works, and I would, I would try to look at some other designs that reduce the length of driveway. I have some real concerns about what's going on, um, and I think there are some ways to loop the road around, um, back on itself, or, um, I, 'cause I, I, I guess I could echo Gary's, Gary's point is that I'm just not comfortable with the length of driveway for, for rescue, for the whole night sky thing. I think it's wonderful, um, and I know Muriel's neighborhood, and it's very, very different.
It is.
Um, and I, and I just wanna say for the whole wholesomeness of raising families in these bigger houses, that it's isolating these people from communicating with each other, and I think that some of the, some of those ramifications should be looked at as well. That's just, I don't... That's just, I, it's a total kink in the works and I don't mean to be, but it's just a concern I have with looking at the plan.
So looping the road around is actually not allowed by your regulations. That's something that we actually proposed in our original, um, our original submittal and was, was a looped road.
Right, the lot just doesn't, well, it's, it's, it's the constraints of the lot, right?
Not.
No, no, you can.
Where the driveway, where there were two different entries.
That's allowed, yes.
Right.
That's what I thought you meant.
So, so, so.
That's, that's allowed, I'm saying, she was saying looping around.
I was looping around, so that's not.
Back around on itself.
Do you know what the actual reg, reg, regulation that, that doesn't allow that is?
It's, the measurement of a dead end is from the end, so if you looped it around.
Mm-hmm.
I don't have a marker, otherwise I would just.
Sorry.
But if you looped it around like this.
Well, it'd be, it'd be around like that, it'd be around, yeah, follow your finger around.
So you.
Right, right.
Right.
You'd need the secondary.
If the dead end, if we, if we tied that end to Whisper here, the measurement of the dead end is from here all the way around.
You have to have a secondary exit.
So, so the other one that I was thinking of at the end of the last meeting, but it would take out more trees, was to connect the, what is it, um, eleven and twelve, take their road and pull it through.
So that's a drive, so that's the, basically if we were gonna do that, we would be going for a twenty-four lot subdivision, cause that's what we had before. But the, um, if, if we're gonna ha, if you're gonna have two access points, then we're not limited to.
I just wonder.
Completely different subdivision, and the, and the conservation commission definitely does not like that. Because it.
But it starts from a completely different location, so it'd be essentially echoing the drive, um, the, the drive for those second two lots. So the only difference that it would make up, so it wouldn't be doing what you did before. It would be doing around and coming up, so, um, where's the.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna interrupt. I'm gonna let them figure out the constraints of their lot and the design they wanna propose.
Okay.
Um, I, have you talked to the fire chief?
Yeah.
Yeah, and what's he saying about this?
Common dark?
The, the whole, the whole thing with the long driveways.
Oh, he's, well, um, as I mentioned last time, um, we, I had talked to him and, um, he, he has regulations for the long driveways.
Yeah.
He has a turn, every, if, if they're longer than five, well, every five hundred feet, he wants a widened, widened area so cars can pass.
Okay.
Um, and at the end, he wants a way that, that the truck can turn around to get out of there. It doesn't have to back up.
All right.
Um, which we can provide, and Dan's working on the plans for that now, the grading and that.
Okay.
Turnaround, and, um, other than that, it was, he wants a widening area every five hundred feet, so.
Okay, all right, I do, I definitely think, oh, go ahead.
Through the chair, and I think there was, um, in, uh, sprinklers in the, the houses that were on the.
Yeah, we have a couple driveways that are.
Lot one, lot five.
Yep.
And probably, probably lot eleven and twelve have, you know, just based somewhere.
They weren't in it then, I don't know.
Yeah, they weren't.
They weren't, and, uh, yep.
Okay, all right, and we are gonna have to wrap up because we're.
So, one last thing.
Yep.
Um, the, the, um, Phil defers the, to the planning board on whether or not you're comfortable with the letter from, which is the second piece of paper that I, I gave to you guys. Um, so normally in a subdivision, you'd have septic systems on every lot, so we would be providing, uh, soil testing for all of, for, um, soil testing for those systems on each lot. We're, right now, we're, uh, providing a community septic system.
Yeah.
Um, this is the letter from when we had the twenty-two lots.
Yeah.
Um, but it's the same, we're using the same area for, um, it's, we're using a smaller portion of the same area that we were proposing in the twenty-two lot. So we just wanna make sure you're comfortable that with this, uh, basically making, when, when, and, when and if you, uh, approve the subdivision, you'd be doing so contingent upon approval of the Board of Health on the final plans for the, for the septic system.
I'm comfortable with that.
Mm-hmm.
Cause we've discussed it before, hey? Okay.
Do you have an access road to that leaching field also?
You can update a letter from the Board of Health, right?
Contingent on their approval, right?
An updated.
Right. You just won't, we won't, unless you need that, unless you need an updated one prior to your vote, we would prefer to hold off on finalize it, because we have to finalize all of the, um, design in order to get another letter from them.
So it'll definitely be a condition, I would think, right?
Which is completely reasonable.
Okay, it seems pretty intuitive, I hate to say those words out loud.
(laughing).
You know, but it seems like it should be, um, easily attainable if the first one was approvable.
Yes.
Um, okay, when's our next opportunity?
July eighth.
July eighth, at what time?
Wide open unless we do the, um, interviews.
July eighth is wide open, except we are going to do the interviews, right?
We have a set of time for those, so.
Okay, all right, so, um, actually, if we do these folks at seven thirty and give you an hour, um, we can hopefully make real tracks and then that allows people more time to get home if they work in Boston or whatever, for eight-thirty interviews? Anybody object? Okay, let's do it that way, seven thirty. Um, do we have to extend decisions?
Yes.
Somewhere in here, so that would be to the fifteenth. So, right?
Just for the definitive.
Just for the definitive.
Okay.
It would be to.
Right, cause the special permit is the ninety, all right. Um, I will entertain a motion to extend the continued public hearings for Whisper Way and, uh, to July eighth and the decision on the definitive plan to July fifteenth at seven thirty.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I meant for your information, Dave missed this meeting, so he will have to watch.
Yep.
Telecast and, and sign a form. Frank, can, he's out for the definitive, but he can still vote on the special permit.
Oh, good lord.
If he watches.
And our two new members.
Unless you choose to withdraw and reset it.
On the definitive.
On either.
On either.
Because they, we've opened deliberations before they were on the board for both.
So on the agenda today, it said we were opening the one, so was that not right then?
Oh.
It was continued.
It should've been continued.
Yeah, okay, yep, that's okay. Okay, so.
What's do they need?
Say, so for, um. So they need, um, for the, for both special, for the definitive, that's a majority, is that correct? Okay, and you are, you don't have one, two, three, um, but Dave can watch. So there are six viable votes.
Correct. And I believe.
The special permit has to be a super majority. You need five of those six votes.
I believe that you cannot miss one more me, if you miss one more meeting, you cannot vote on the.
He is, he is pointing his finger right at me. (laughing). So I must, I must, I must've missed one of these and caught up. All right, so I have to, I have to attend. All right, just so you know, unless you, um, decided to withdraw and start over again, but understanding you could fly right through the beginning portion of that. All right, thank you, that was important to know. And I'll try and attend.
Dave probably ever misses one, I can't remember Dave missing a meeting.
Dave?
Yeah.
He's at his daughter's orientation at Penn State, so, special occasion. Um, okay.
There are a lot of orientations, I have a couple of friends, big schools, big schools are over this summer.
I've never done it that way, what's that? Orientation, orientation, yeah, I have a couple friends who are out at orientation this week, so, really big schools.
Can I, um, move to adjourn?
You can, do it. Is there a second for adjourning?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are we putting minutes or not?
Huh?
Are we putting minutes or?
We did.
Oh, we did, okay.
That's all right, you were, you were signing.
Okay, got it.
Yeah. You're excused.
I did read them.
Yeah, um, okay, all those in favor, aye.
I have to get a model.
Recycling?